This is a virtual meeting using the Zoom platform. Members of the public can view this meeting live on Channel 8 or the city's website. Live Spanish translation services are being provided for tonight's council meeting by telephone. Please dial seven two zero three eight six nine zero two three and use code one zero four zero nine one star. If you're a council member, please be sure to have your video camera on and be mindful that we are streaming this meeting on Channel 8 and on our city's website. The chat function has been disabled to ensure that the public can see all portions of the meeting. The city clerk is the host of the meeting and I N R I T director will be the co-host. Council members and panelists will be able to unmute themselves when recognized. Please mute yourself when you have finished speaking to prevent disruptions. Members of the public who have registered to speak will be recognized at the proper time. As a reminder, we will use roll call votes only when required by law or when requested by a council member or the clerk. Other votes will be voice votes counted by raising hands in the zoom app or as the chair determines. If a member disagrees with the stated outcome of the vote or feels that their vote was not properly heard or is not recognized, the membership immediately requests the mayor's attention. This time I will call the regular meeting to order and ask the city clerk to call a roll.
Mayor Hughesman.
Present.
Mayor Pro Tem Frank.
Present.
Councilmember Madera.
Present.
Councilmember Alan Thomas. Councilmember Noble.
Present.
Councilmember Wardiola.
Present.
Councilmember Hurst.
Present.
Councilmember Grimes. Councilmember Smith.
Present.
Mayor Hughesman, you have a quorum.
Thank you. At this time, I'm looking for a motion to excuse those members not present. Mayor Pro Tem.
A motion to excuse those not present.
Councilmember Madera.
Second.
Have a motion in a second to excuse those members not present. Is there any discussion? Seeing no request for discussion, if everybody could raise your physical hands so they can be counted on the screen. And the motion passes unanimous seven to zero. This time we will move to the Pledge of Allegiance while those on the webinar, please unmute your microphone and join in the Pledge of Allegiance after the city clerk displays the flag. I pledge allegiance. Of the United States of America. And to the Republic. For which stands. One nation. Under God. Indivisible. With liberty and justice for all. Thank you very much. Modification of rules for public comment. All public comment will occur during citizen communication except for public hearings. Persons who registered to speak under multiple items will be allowed to speak multiple times. Public hearing testimony will occur during the public hearing portion of the meeting. Does any council member wish to move to modify this practice? Seeing none, we will continue. First item on our agenda is citizen communication per council policy. Citizen communication is the time on our agenda for the public to address council and business and affairs of the city. The city council is not able to hear any comments at this time on land use matters that are before or may come before council. Please reserve such comments for the appropriate public hearing. As a reminder, council must wait until administrative council business to take action in response to citizen communication. The city needed advanced registration in order to participate in citizen communication for this meeting. If you are currently in this meeting to speak during citizen communication, please listen for me to call your name and the clerk will unmute you so you may begin. If you do not respond or are disconnected, you may miss your chance to comment. Please give your name and address for the record and keep your comments limited to three minutes. Thank you. First on the agenda is Rana Sanchez.
Rana, if you're in the meeting, it can hit star nine on your phone or use the raise hand function in Zoom. Mayor Hughesman, I do not see Rana Sanchez in the meeting.
Yeah, next on the agenda is Steve Douglas, who wishes to speak on ordinances two, three, one, two, and two, three, one, five.
Steve, oh, I see Steve already. Steve, you should be able to unmute yourself and you'll have three minutes per agenda item once you begin.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. You forgive me, it's up to me to speak. First of all, I'm looking at the citizens' communication. The minutes that need be approved tonight. It says that I was supportive of council purchasing the floor for the South Platte Crossing and I was not. I was against that because you guys received nothing for the information you received, the analysis proved to be determined it was going to be very costly to proceed forward than what the initial cost was. So I would like to make sure that's corrected in the in the minutes tonight. Because also at that meeting, it meant council administrative business for you guys to vote on that. That gave that company an opportunity to come in on eleventh hour and actually show support in changing your views on your minds is because when you guys had a study session, you guys weighed in. I know you couldn't vote, but it 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 put it where the council was not wanted to proceed forward in purchasing that property. Let's see. Also, I'd like to talk about the much the time and effort and resources, special outside attorneys fees that associate with Commerce City in working with the oil industry. And continue to work with the industry that has a financial downward spiral and also to continue this industry that that banks are not even going to finance or support those drilling efforts because they have not, they will not pay off in the long term. Tonight you have two companies you're going to hear about as far as environmental changes within our our city. And if you guys really want to show support towards the citizens who live around Suncor. One applicant that was not part of this. It just amazes me that these two applicants made it made it past this point and not the third one. Let's see, I don't know how much time left. Let's see, also. You have a the master developer you have right now running the northern area. Someone who's tied into that master developer has huge stocks in Suncor as well. And if we're going to do things in D I D I A tech center, let's really go for the tech companies and not just the name tech area in this northern area Commerce City. Sorry, I did break those things down that way.
Mr. Douglas, that concludes your first three minutes. You do our allotted three minutes per ordinance two, three, one, two, and two, three, one, five that you wish to speak about.
Oh, you want me to do that right now?
Yes, please.
Okay, appreciate that. Thank you. Let's see ordinance two, three, one, two. Oh, on the on brief specific. And I know they reached in the past, we had the pit bull ban. So this right here will will remove the pit bull registration requirements. It'd be nice to know how many pit bulls or vicious animals are already have been registered prior to this new law taking effect. And then what constitutes our triggers for this ban to come back? If it shows that is a certain category of animals or breeds are the cause of attacks? Would council look at reviewing and changing this policy? In ordinance twenty three fifteen. This is the ordinance on modeling trap code to regulate parking and vehicles or residential areas. Reading through this parking amendments. It really doesn't. It it just kind of enhances what's already there for parking as far as time and and maybe distance of where cars park in front of a residential area. But this does not address, which is a continuous problem, is RV parking trailers and work trucks. So I'm authorizing city council not to approve this tonight because this does not do what you guys talked about. There is nothing in here that goes with RVs, trailers and work trucks. And that continues to be the problems within the neighborhoods. You have work trucks that park opposite on the streets. We have semis that park up north and I have pictures to prove that. So if we're going to take this ordinance twenty three fifteen parking amendment serious, let's actually put some policy in there that's going to take care of those and not look at and in the future of throwing his back, throwing the dice and you know, coming up with some sort of legislation later on. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Douglas. Next on the list is Steve Struck.
Steve, oh, I see Steve already. Steve, you should be able to unmute yourself and you'll have three minutes once you begin.
Got it. Thank you, sir. I addressed the council a couple of months ago about dog attacks. Since that time, we were attacked once again by a dog. This is the third time in five months we've been attacked by unleashed dogs. Um, if remember, not the first time we were attacked by two German shepherds. And my chihuahua is now permanently blinded one eye because he was bit so hard by the German shepherds that his eye popped out of his socket. We've incurred over $5,000 in medical and vet bills. And the only punishment that the dog owners have is a $133 fine for owning a vicious dog. At this point, I'm requesting that we raise the fine from $130 to maybe up to 500. So people get the idea to keep their vicious dogs on a leash. And then there's another part of the law that says that if a dog attacks a dog, it has to happen on two occasions before those the vicious dogs can be removed. If if a if a dog attacks somebody and does that much damage to my dog, why would I wait? Why do you have to wait two times before those dogs removed from the house? When they're obviously dangerous and vicious and a a threat to anything else in the neighborhood. We live over in the villages of Buffalo Run. We've been attacked on three different streets. We only have seven streets in our area. And we're afraid to walk down three of them. So we had to go where we came and walked the dogs in our neighborhood because on three consecutive blocks, we've been attacked by dogs since since June. I'm not sure what the council can do other than raise the fine for owning a vicious animal and then spread the word that this is not going to be condoned by Commerce City. It's it doesn't make any sense where I'm going to go on. I had to go through an MRI on my on my spine now because I was knocked down during the attack. And this lady still has her dogs and nothing but $130 fine. So I'm just requesting that the vicious dogs law be updated to where it doesn't take two attacks for a dog to be removed and the fine be raised to whatever you feel is appropriate. I'm thinking $500 will maybe will think twice about not putting their dogs in the leash. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next on the list is Gerardo Trejo Bonfield.
Gerardo, if you're in the meeting, you can hit star nine on your phone or use the raise hand function in Zoom. Mayor Hughesman, I do not see them in the meeting.
Thank you. Next is David Phillips.
I see David. David, you should be able to unmute yourself and you'll have three minutes once you begin.
Hello, can you hear me?
We can. Yes, David, you may proceed.
Good evening, Council and Mr. Mayor. Listen, we're in the core part of Commerce City. My wife and I, we've lived here close to 20 years. And there's a serious problem. Particular area has turned into a racetrack. And these the cars are speeding up and down our streets here. Totally ignoring any type of speed limit. And it's just absolutely out of control. We absolutely need help quick. This is an emergency situation. I have called Commerce City PD several times. They've been very kind and understanding. However, the information that I get from the officer is that they are limited in staff. And these type of issues do not take priority. I live on East sixty sixth place, which is kind of like center core of Commerce City. And there are no speed bumps on our street. It's a very long street that connects Havana. I'm sorry, Monaco to Kearney Street off of East sixty sixth place. And I'd say the street is probably close to a quarter of a mile long. No speed bumps, no slow traffic signs, nothing. The street desperately needs speed bumps. The streets over on Dematte and Kearney have them. That seems to have slowed down the the problem. My wife was coming home from work. Kid came barreling around the corner and she signaled to the guy, slow down. She was viciously attacked verbally, flipped off. And there there just seems like nothing that we can do. The only solution, I think, to stop this kind of behavior is we need at least two speed bumps installed on East sixty sixth place, please. The desperate situation. And I thank you very much for your attention. In addition, I don't see my council member on screen tonight in this ward. So gosh, I really wish you could have heard this, but nevertheless, I'm sure you'll consider this. And please take immediate action on getting these speed bumps installed. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Members of the public were also able to submit comments online and by mail. No written comments were received by the deadline. If anyone wishes to speak at future council meetings, please check the meeting agenda and city website for information on how to register or submit written comments. Next on the agenda are presentations. First presentation is the COVID nineteen update. Will interim city manager Tinkelman, please provide an update on the city's overall response to the COVID nineteen crisis.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Hold that up so I can see it here. All right, we're continuing to operate under the 2020 budget reductions. And if you had a chance to review the report on our finances that came out from Cheryl Carson's for October. You'll see that we're significantly under budget and so that's the good news. All the departments are performing well with those reductions. We're also continuing to operate with a reduced number of employees in the facilities. Again, trying to minimize exposure to the public and to the staff. We do rotate enough people through the facilities to be able to continue to provide service and answer questions. The primary way for we're asking people to enter the facilities is to use the Qless software to make appointments. And that's if they need attention or assistance in person. And the civic center itself is open only on Tuesdays and Wednesdays. Again, mirroring the the court dates, I'm sorry, Wednesdays and Thursdays, not Tuesdays and Wednesdays. To mirror the the normal court dates, although court is operating virtually as well. Um, in terms of COVID nineteen case, the case numbers are still very high in Adams County. Adams County is at level red, which is the second worst. And that unfortunately has caused more restrictions on businesses as well. Our staff continue to wear masks in the facilities and require mask wearing by visitors. We continue to publish information about a number of programs to assist members of the community and the city manager update. And we're continuing at the same level in terms of our reopening plan for the city's reopening and anticipate that that will be for, you know, next number of months. We know that a vaccine is coming, but it's going to be many months before everyone has an opportunity to obtain a vaccine. With that, just quick general overview, I'll turn it over to city attorney Sheasley for some updates from him.
Thank you, Mr. Tinkelman. Just very briefly to note that the legislature had a special session last week where they passed the number of COVID nineteen related bills. I don't believe any of them have been signed yet. They are primarily funding bills. I know staff is on the lookout to see if there is any opportunity for the city to receive funding to direct funding locally. They also passed a law allowing municipalities to enact a food delivery fee restriction ordinance as the city council already approved here. So we're going to be taking a look at that if it is ultimately signed to see if we need to update ours. That is it for me. Thank you.
Ms. Blakeman, would you continue with your part of the report?
Thank you very much, Mr. Tinklinburg. I will start today with looking at the overall allocations that we have for the the funds that we have expended for COVID. So the original funds was 4.6 million. And of that, through the end of November and also including some pending items that we see coming down the pike in December. We have about 3,398,000 that has been expended and I'll break that down in just a moment. Which leaves us with 1,248 that's still remaining. But that is subject to change. We still have some things that are coming in that will most likely change that number somewhat. Breaking that down a little bit and Roger's going to cover restaurants and small businesses when I am done here. But for the family grants, out of the 150,000 that was available, we have been able to spend 111,000 of that that was awarded to 30 applicants so far to date. And of the childcare grants, we have expended 22,400 that's been awarded to eight applicants to date. IT will be utilizing some of the CARES Act funding to buy some additional laptops. We anticipate that there is going to be ongoing work that's going to need to happen at home with folks who might not necessarily be working directly at home at this point in time, at least for the next five to seven months or so. And those are in the process of being purchased at this time. E-ticketing, right now, the IT department is working with the courts. And there's been a lot of staff training that has happened over this last week. The more intensive training over the last week. We anticipate that e-ticketing is will be rolling out before the end of this month. And they are actually running some real life tickets through the system for testing this week. As Mr. Tanklandberg mentioned, virtual hearings began last week. For people that are not able to participate virtually, we still have those in-person opportunities for people to be heard. And the court webpage has been updated to reflect this new information, including information on tutorial, for example, on Zoom meetings and how to attend a Zoom meeting for those that may not have had an opportunity to do that prior to their virtual court. And those are in both English and in Spanish. In finance, they completed the interim financial audit with I Bailey last week. It had been a about a three week process and they will be back in April of 2021 to finalize the 2020 audit. The HR vacancy rate is at 8.4, so we're still holding well there. And the end of the year wellness event, which is usually a big luncheon gathering where members that have participated in the wellness program are raffled and rewarded for having participated. Of the 256 employees that did participate in the wellness program this past year. Tomorrow, we're having a virtual end of year wellness event. And they'll be raffling off the kazoo points for people this particular year in lieu of the the live events and the prizes that are normally given out there. With that, I will pass it back to Mr. Tinklinburg.
Thank you. Wanted to give you a quick update. Terms of community development, they're still very busy at about 165 land use cases. They did 2,500 inspections for November and 268 permits were processed. So you can see COVID nineteen has not slowed down the development side of the economy at all. And our staff is continuing to provide support. In terms of economic development, as Ms. Blakeman referenced, the CARES Act Business Support and Recovery Grants Program has gone through four funding rounds now. A total of 223 applications were received and processed. There were 171 grant awards made for a total of 981,500. And in terms of just round four itself, 66 applications were received and 59 awards were made for a total of 490,500. And of those, 21 grants were for restaurants and bars, 38 were for small businesses. So that program has been successful. And as Ms. Blakeman had pointed out, you know, majority of the 4.6 million has been spent or committed. The remaining amount that is left can be absorbed. In fact, it can be absorbed several times over by the public safety salaries. So we won't be turning any money back in, but not all of it got out into the community. So but again, I think, you know, the significant majority of it did get into the community and and so that that was successful. Parks Recreation Golf, they're they've been focusing on the seniors program and and so have not set up the ambassador program just yet. Golf remains steady. Public Works continuing to do their normal winterization. They're wrapping up on installing new equipment in the snowplow vehicles so that Snow Trooper will once again be active and be able to be monitored. But this has enhanced the equipment that now will provide information about when the plows are down or up and report out on the amount of material that's being spread, that type of thing. So hopefully that is able to become operational here shortly. We continue to see one to two staff members that have to be quarantined in both of the work groups for parks and streets. And that's due to exposures that they're experiencing either at home or or through friends, that type of thing. So again, watching that very carefully and and trying to keep our overall staff safe. You may see continued pavement road maintenance work that's happening. And also the annual street sign replacement program is going to be underway through December. So in spite of COVID nineteen, those normal operations are continuing. Are there any questions for any of us?
Councilmember Noble.
Yes, thank you very much. I did not hear the where funds went in the seniors program in the last distribution. For aging adults was a category for CARES Act funding.
Yes, and that has been operational. I don't have the number in terms of the dollar amount that went out for that. I know Ms. Blakeman talked about childcare and the family grants, but I I didn't have information to share with you yet regarding the senior program.
Okay, and I I do. Okay, and I do hope that they move the ambassador program up the priority list. Because that was very important to help some of these businesses. With handling these issues and providing, making sure that they had PPE and signs and whatever else they might need. Especially since we're locking down a little bit more than we have been.
Right.
Thank you.
Any other questions for staff regarding the COVID-19 update? Seeing none, we will move on. Thank you, both all three of you for your updates. Next on the agenda for presentations are the oil and gas monthly update. Would Martin Ollie, Environment Planner, please make the presentation?
Thank you, Honorable Mayor and Members of City Council. I will be giving the oil and gas monthly update tonight. I do want to note that Oil and Gas Special Counsel Matt Sura is also present for this presentation tonight and will be covering some items later on. So I'm going to go ahead and share my screen here. So city oil and gas permit applications, no update since the last time we gave this presentation. You'll know there were, there were some points back about a couple of months ago where the oil and gas permits were reaching an inactive status. They reapplied for five out of the seven permits. Staff is at the point now where we've significantly reviewed the second round of permits and are preparing to provide comments to the applicant. So you can see here, this is reflected in the map. This remains unchanged from last month. The review schedule unchanged from last month. There's no been, there has not been additional activity at the state level. And then the existing CIGC activity, this remains unchanged from last month. Some general updates, on November 23rd, the Colorado Oil and Gas Conservation Commission unanimously adapted. New mission change rules, alternative location analysis and cumulative impacts requirements. This is one of the most significant rule makings that the CIGC has undertaken in the last 10 years. Pretty significantly overhauls the regulations in conjunction with Senate Bill 181. Matt Sura, following my presentation is going to be highlighting some of the differences and talking specifically about what the rule changes included. High level overview of what they did and how it relates to our current draft that's publicly available. That we plan to bring forward to Planning Commission on January 5th. So with that, we are in the process right now of finalizing very minor final changes on the draft, getting ready to distribute that and. Have it publicly available and getting ready for Planning Commission on January 5th. The recruitment for the Environmental Consulting Services RFP is ongoing. We are going to be having our, our two finalists advance forward to council interviews following the oil and gas monthly update. And I'll be giving a brief intro and discussing what those differences are and how we got to our evaluation process. A little bit of an update on the Suncor supplemental environmental projects. As you remember, the deadline for that has been. Set for December 31st. The city is working to conduct an additional survey on the project ideas that it's planning to submit prior to the project deadline. So following that study session we had in September. Staff went back and went under the hood and took a look at the recommendations that were made from City Council. And we're, we're looking to focus specifically on two sub-submissions that would be provided before the December 31st deadline. So this, or the survey that's going to be provided to the public in a digital format. Is going to ask more specific questions and try and get additional considerations and thoughts to be included in that proposal before that occurs. Additionally, staff has been setting up additional meetings with community members and. On Wednesdays, planning to meet specifically with Colte Bando to get additional feedback on how these project ideas can be refined a little bit more in depth. So with that, I'll go ahead and move over to the CDPH information on Suncor. There have been zero self-reported air quality exceedances since Suncor last gave this update. I do want to note that since the, the publication time of this presentation, which was last Friday. There was an incident that occurred. Over the weekend where a pipeline, basically, so there's a, there's a Magellan pipeline that goes from the Suncor facility all the way down to Fountain, Colorado. There was a spill in a release of diesel fuel on 56th Avenue in Brighton. Roads were closed, a number of Adams County as well as Commerce City's emergency responders were on site. And the cause of the incident is currently under investigation by Magellan Midstream as well as Suncor. I specifically don't have any additional information other than what's been shared to us. But if council has any additional questions, we can certainly direct them to Suncor and appropriate parties to get more information for you all. And with that, I'm going to go ahead and pass it off to our oil and gas special counsel, Matt Sura, and invite him to give his presentation.
Thank you. I'm going to share my screen here quickly. Hopefully you should see that. This is Matt Sura, Special Counsel on Oil and Gas Matters, and it's good to see you all, council members, Mayor Hughesman. This is going to be a very brief discussion about the Colorado Gas Conservation Commission rulemaking that just concluded, as Dominic just mentioned. This is the mission change rulemaking. It's been going on for more than six months. Going to be discussing a little bit of the, the changes to the Colorado Gas Conservation Commission process and application. Changes made to the Colorado Gas Conservation Commission protections and then differences between the draft LDC amendments and the Colorado Gas Conservation Commission rules. So just to preface this. Due to the Colorado Gas Conservation Commission regulations, Senate Bill 181 and reflected also in the. Commerce City Land Development Code, the most protective rules are going to be applied. The Colorado Gas Conservation Commission rules 422 specifically states that operators will comply with all relevant local government requirements. Including regulations that may be more protective or stricter than the Colorado Gas Conservation Commission regulations. Commerce City LDC has a similar requirement in both a section 213235 as well as 215266. Stating that the operators are expected to comply with the local regulations, state regulations and federal law. So going into the changes at the Colorado Gas Conservation Commission into their application process. The first is that they've really streamlined the oil and gas development process in that they've combined the spacing application. The location assessment, which is called a Form 2A, and the application for permit to drill or Form 2. Those are all now one application process called an oil and gas development plan. And they, Colorado Gas Conservation Commission has really expanded what is required of an operator to prove that they're going to be protective of public health and safety and welfare. By expanding all the planning documents that are required by the operator to submit as part of the OGDP. And the reality is, is that what is now required by the Colorado Gas Conservation Commission is mirrored in. For the most part, in the LDC amendments that we've put forward. And specifically, I'd like to call out the new requirement for an alternative location analysis, which is something that. Dominic Martinelli presented some maps and put together an excellent presentation for the Colorado Gas Conservation Commission. The result was that the Colorado Gas Conservation Commission ended up more or less adopting Commerce City's Alternative Location Analysis. Framework, requiring that an operator that is going into a community specifically and closer to a municipality, they're required to. Look at alternatives to find a location that is going to be most suitable for oil and gas development. Also, if they're within a flood plain and high priority wildlife habitat or. Near and water, public water supply. Changes to the process really expanded notice and opportunities for public comment. And that is particularly so for local governments. So local governments are going to receive a notice of an application that is pending, that has not yet been. Submitted to the Colorado Gas Conservation Commission. At that point, both the relevant local government that has the oil and gas location, proposed oil and gas location within their jurisdiction. But also approximate local government, which is within 2,000 feet of that proposed oil and gas location. Have an opportunity to meet with the applicant, the oil and gas operator. Prior to that, the submission of the application as well as the Colorado Gas Conservation Commission staff. They call this a formal consultation process. Once the OGDP is proposed, then the local government, as well as the approximate local government within 2,000 feet of the, the only guest location. Also have the opportunity to then again ask for an consultation. And then ultimately, the director of the Colorado Gas Conservation Commission is required to notify. Both approximate and relevant local governments of their pending decision. Their recommended decision, that recommended decision, instead of being an administrative process, which it is today. They're going to have a hearing for every one of the oil and gas development plans. And that hearing can be just with the operator and, you know, the other stakeholders. But certainly, local government has the right to participate in those hearings. Relevant local government has an automatic standing to participate and approximate local government. Merely, merely needs to prove that they have, they're be affected or somehow aggrieved by the only guest development application to be able to participate. So also given automatic standing is anyone within 2,000 feet of the proposed oil and gas location. If the local government or any party that is participating in the oil and gas development plan hearing is dissatisfied with the decision. They can request that to be heard by, instead of just a hearing officer, by the full Colorado Oil and Gas Conservation Commission. This is important because this is the first time that true due process has been given to affected local governments as well as. Affected public who are going to be living or working or going to school or near a place of worship from these oil and gas facilities. The protections that I wanted to highlight briefly are water quality as one. Commerce City worked with a dozen local governments and water providers to put forward some really strong new protections to public water supplies. And that is that today, there are protections, a setback of 300 feet from surface water only that go, that is going to be used for public water supplies. That has been expanded from 300 feet to 1,000 feet. And that same thousand-foot setback is now applied to shallow water supply wells. And that is, of course, how Commerce City supplies, gets all of its water supply from South Adams. County Water Supply. South Adams County Water and Sanitation District. They use these shallow water wells, alluvial water wells that are now have these additional protections of a thousand feet. And this is an example of shallow waterfall, water supply. It's an unconfined aquifer. It's an alluvial aquifer. It could be called alluvial because it's somehow. Put next to streams or affected by streams. And as you can see, if there was a spill on the surface here, it could affect a water well. And so that's why they're, they're for these shallow water wells in particular, they're allowing for these additional setbacks. Deeper water wells such as the Fox Hills or Denver Aquifer, I don't receive that type of protection. Because they have these confining beds, they are, they are more protected than these shallow aquifers. Noise is something that the Colorado Gas Conservation Commission also made some important changes to. They lowered the noise thresholds for oil and gas operations during drilling and operations. Particularly around residential areas. They also, for the first time, acknowledged that sea scale noise or that low vibration noise is problematic. And so they have enforceable standards now of 60 decibels for residential areas. This is found in Rule 423. It was formally found in Rule 802. So there will have to be some changes made to the proposed land development code to properly cite these new oil and gas regulations. The citing requirements in Rule 604, the Colorado Gas Conservation Commission still has a very strict 500-foot setback from homes. That is unchanged. The only way to get closer than 500 feet is to have all of the, the residents that are affected within that 500-foot buffer. Sign a waiver. There's also an increased setback between 500 and 2,000 feet. Where the oil and gas operator has to demonstrate that they are putting forward protections that are substantially equivalent to the protections that you would get if you were 2,000 feet away. So very, that's a very high bar, but it is something where the, the director as well as the commissioners ultimately are going to be making decisions. For allowing, if there should be an oil and gas location closer than 2,000 feet from a home. And some of the considerations that they're looking at are the position of the relevant local government. And their disposition in their land use decisions as to whether or not that they would recommend that be allowed closer than 2,000 feet from a home. As well as any alternative location analysis or requirements that they've put forward, best management practices that they've put forward. For that operator to comply with. Finally, Colorado Gas Conservation Mission rulemaking next steps. These rules were passed on the 23rd of November. They become effective on January 15th and 2021. The pending applications that have not been decided at that point are going to be put on hold and ultimately. They are going to be given six months to be able to resubmit those applications in the new format. Instead of a specific, whether it is a spacing application or. Location assessment Form 2A or an APD Form 2, a drilling permit. Those are again, are going to be put together and they're going to have to resubmit with the new format as well as all those new planning documents that are required. Including an alternative location analysis. Applicants have to notify the Colorado Gas Conservation Commission by March 1st if they are going to be resubmitting those applications. And then there's going to be new rulemaking to kind of finish out the requirements of Senate Bill 181. They're going to look at reclamation requirements and financial assurances as well as. Ways to address the concerns around orphaned wells, those wells that have not been properly plugged and abandoned. And are no longer serviced by an oil and gas company that's still in business. And that concludes my presentation. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Mr. Sir. And one thing before we jump into questions, I do want to note one item that I didn't mention during this Suncor presentation. Every month, we receive a written monthly report from Suncor in conjunction with the oil and gas monthly update. We typically don't present that along with staff's presentation, but that is included within the embedded agenda. On the city's website, and I do want to mention that they do contain two items following up from the October 26th study session that was held with City Council. They attempted to answer a couple of questions that were raised regarding PFAS and taxes paid by Suncor. So with that, both myself and Matt Sura are available to answer any questions you have.
Any questions from council at this time? Councilmember Noble?
I think you're on mute.
It's $4 million to Commerce City and $11 million to Adams County annually. Just in case someone wasn't reading it. Mr. Sir, will you be providing your slides to us? Was this in our packet, Mr. Martinelli?
Unfortunately, this was, this wasn't able to make it into our packet, but this has been provided to Dylan Gibson and we'll make sure that it's distributed to all members of council. And posted later if possible.
And I do think that is a bit of a problem in terms of notifying our residents. That this was going to be on the agenda and that it was material to look at, not only to us, it leaves us. Well, it should have been done. So please make certain that we get that in advance in the future. The Outlook residents, many of them have been asking a lot of questions and are concerned. Edmondson site is in unincorporated Adams County, but fracks under 470 and underneath the Outlook neighborhood as a whole. Have you been in conversation with unincorporated Adams? Have you been in conversation with unincorporated Adams County or Great Western about the Edmondson site?
So regarding the Edmondson site, staff is aware that that house has been applied for. We do hold a relatively strong relationship with Adams County's local government designee and do go back and forth. We have not received any sort of notification from them regarding this facility or anything that they had thought that we should be aware of as a staff here at Commerce City. If there's additional questions that council has that council would like staff to follow up with, we certainly can do that.
Well, given the new rules that are going to into effect about adjacency, they're certainly within 2,000 feet of Commerce City. So I think reaching out to them and seeing what's going on would be helpful. I'd like to know what Great Western is doing. This has been an application that was submitted in 2018. And are they trying to beat January 15th? Or are they going to take in to consideration the new rules that are in effect by the C O G C C? So to get some sort of update would be good for the residents of Board four who live in Outlook.
Yeah, we can certainly reach out to Adams County staff and provide an update for the next update.
And I did want to point out also that Suncor had a lag time again. This was on Friday, so it was 6:15 in the morning when this pipeline had an issue and we were notified at about 11:00. It wasn't completely clear that this was a pipeline break that occurred in Brighton. So that's interesting information because the residents who live around Suncor couldn't understand why alarms went off, but they didn't hear any alarms. So this is good information. And I am correct in that, right? It was a pipeline break in Brighton.
Sorry, did you say in Brighton?
Is that where you said the pipeline broke or was it on Brighton Boulevard?
It was the intersection of 56th and Brighton.
Brighton Boulevard?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay, not bright. All right. The residents did not hear an alarm. And in the notification that Suncor sent out, they said an alarm was issued or was sounded, an alarm was sounded. So if we could look into what they mean by an alarm and who was supposed to receive, who was supposed to hear that alarm, that would be appreciated.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Any other questions on the long guess update? Seeing none, I thank you, Mr. Martinelli and Mr. Serso for your time. Appreciate the update and the presentation. Next step is the environmental consulting services city council interviews. Mr. Martinelli, you are still on deck.
All right, thank you, Mayor. So I'm going to go ahead and cue Dylan Gibson to let in the the first round of consultants. But as he does that, I'll go ahead and just provide a brief update and overview of the process that we went through. And what is is in front of you tonight? So on October 2nd, the city released an environmental consultant services RFP and invited various members of organizations and groups to submit to this RFP with a deadline of October 30th. So the RFP is looking at a number of different items from an environmental capacity that the city is looking to potentially have help with and generally create an overall environmental framework that the city can pursue in the future. So generally speaking, those those four main categories that they typically cover that the scope incorporated were environmental policy development. So this is external community wide policy and land use strategies that can be implemented within the community. Environmental policy development is applies to internal city functions and operations. So what does the city do on a daily basis? How does it apply to fleet and facilities and how we conduct our operations and businesses as a city? The third component was air quality monitoring and policy recommendation services. So essentially making a number of recommendations about where monitoring could occur in the city and general land use policy. Other other types of recommendations that could be made to improve air quality outcomes in the community. And then essentially the same component from water quality. So looking at green infrastructure, looking at water quality improvements, taking a look at the corridors and the streams within Commerce City to see what types of improvements can be made there. So during that period from October 2nd to October 30th, the city received a total of seven responses to the environmental consulting services RFP. Compared to a number of RFPs that have been released in the past, this is a fairly broad and comprehensive scope. So the types of groups that we saw for the submissions were actually joint groups. So when I say seven submissions, that was relatively seven submissions of three to four firms joining together. So what was what was occurred is is these these consulting, these RFPs were reviewed by staff. There was an internal team that was formed between community development, public works, parks and recreation, as well as the city manager's office to evaluate these these proposals and essentially bring forward or recommend or a couple of finalists to council. So three of the seven were brought forward to staff interviews and then two finalists are being brought to you in in for tonight's meeting. So following that, we we have a general format. So we're going to have the Lotus Engineering and Sustainability Group go first. They're going to give roughly a 20 minute presentation and then save about 20 minutes for you all to ask specific questions for them. And then potentially an additional 10 minutes if the presentation goes along, or if you all have additional questions and discussion that you wish to engage in. Following that, so Spirit Environmental will go following Lotus Engineering Sustainability's presentation. And the recommendations and the the feedback that council has for staff will essentially end up going in the final recommendation that we bring back forward to you. Again, if this if this procurement exceeds the the minimum threshold needed for a council approval, you as a body will have to authorize that approval for the fiscal year 2021. So with that, I'll go ahead and turn it over to Julia Newman to go ahead and start her presentation.
Thank you so much, Dominic. Really appreciate it and very happy to be here with you all this evening. I'm going to go ahead and start sharing my screen. Are you all able to see the slide deck here? Okay, great. Wonderful. Well, again, thank you so much. Really, again, very excited to be here with you all this evening. What I would like to do is to start with just an introduction to our team. So as Dominic mentioned, my name is Julia Newman. I am a senior associate with Lotus Engineering and Sustainability. And I would be the project manager and lead on this project. I have a background in sustainability, working in the nonprofit first, the nonprofit sector first, and then the public sector and now as a consultant mostly to the public sector. We have two additional team members from Lotus who are not on the call today. But Hillary Dobosh is one of our co owners and she would be providing key project support specifically related to the organizational sustainability work and stakeholder engagement. And Rachel Meyer is our research associate who will provide key support for the greenhouse gas inventory and modeling work as well as organizational sustainability and stakeholder engagement. I'll hand it over to my colleague Emily to introduce herself and then to the rest of our team to introduce themselves as well.
Thanks, Julia. Hi, everyone. Good evening. We're so happy to be here and chat with you tonight. My name is Emily Artali. I'm the founder, the principal engineer and the co owner at Lotus. If we were to win this, I would be supporting Julia, helping with the QA QC on the process and really collaborating on most of the tasks. I will now hand it over to Abby with AMBG.
Hey, everyone. Thanks for having us tonight. My name is Abby Bohannon. I am the co founder and owner of AMBG Consulting. I'm going to be serving if we are selected, I will be serving as equity and community health consultant. I have a background in public health, social work and urban planning. And also part of my team is Myra Gonzalez, who will also be serving as equity and capacity building consultant. She brings a background in urban planning as well as community organizing. I'll hand it over to Caroline to introduce herself.
Caroline, you may be. Everyone, sorry about that. My name is Caroline Bias. I'm with Pinion Environmental. I have over 25 years of experience in municipal and environmental consulting specific to water quality and regulations. And Scott Finello, who's not here this evening, he is a also with Pinion and an environmental engineer with surfacing groundwater, water quality and stormwater expertise.
Hi, my name is Dustin Collins, also with Pinion Environmental. I'm our air quality and noise lead here, and I would lead the the air quality effort on this project. I have about 15 years of air quality experience and a large majority of that is also in in oil and gas. My coworker Caitlin Mizaros is also listed here. She's air call air quality specialist and would be assisting with a large chunk of the technical work on this project.
Great. Thanks, everyone.
Hi, sorry, little delay and unmuting myself. So we think we're bringing an outstanding team to Commerce City. So the three of our companies are all experts in our own field, but the thing that's really nice is we also have complementary experience. And we think this approach will provide a very streamlined and efficient work product. So as Lotus, we consider ourselves experts in sustainability. Lotus has been around for a little over eight years and we are primarily climate action planning for local folks. I mean, that's about 95% of our work. And most of that work has been done in the front range. So we have worked with a lot of your peers over the last few years. Plus, we all bring sustainability experience prior to that. We also have experience in air quality and water quality monitoring. I am by trade an environmental engineer. So my focus originally was in air quality and water quality. And that's what I did before I kind of jumped ship into sustainability exclusively. So what this means is that when we're working with Pinion, we can effectively translate their findings into sustainability work. We know what they're saying and we know how to communicate it and we know how to merge this together. Likewise, Pinion is our air quality, water quality experts, and this is really where they shine. And they also have a strong background looking at oil and gas. But they also understand green infrastructure, stormwater management, greenhouse gas and carbon. So they can see how that work relates to theirs and provides a level of synergy. AMBG is our equity expert and they are really able to build their community mobilization, public health and help us identify the voices that need to be part of the table. We have been working in the equity field for a few years as well. And I think with our conversations with AMBG, we've come to the conclusion that there's no successful sustainability project that doesn't have an equity component. We need to make sure all of the voices are heard and are part of the solution and are benefiting from the solution. And we're not creating any unintended consequences. So our vision is for our three firms to work seamlessly to provide a really comprehensive and complete work product to the city. Next slide. Thank you. So this next slide just touches on some of our our projects we wanted to highlight. We wanted to demonstrate that this isn't the first time that we've done this work. So we've all been involved with this for a number of years. I'm not going to go into these project examples in detail for the sake of time, but if you have any questions, feel free to interrupt any of us at any point, or we can dive into them in a Q and A. One project example that we like to highlight is that we led Denver, Denver's 80 by 50 climate action plan. This was a couple of years ago. Since then, we've continued our relationship with Denver and helped them. The reason we wanted to highlight this is this from this project came a series of implementation steps. So for example, right now we're leading the equitable electrification implementation plan for Denver. That was a direct result from this. And so the work that we do is really focused on coming out with action items, plans that really make action and that aren't just stuck on the shelf. AMBG's project that they wanted to highlight is Longmont's equitable carbon free transportation roadmap. And I think this is a really great example of how equity is brought into the climate action discussions and how it can be centered to making sure that every member of the community is involved. And then pain's project examples are the Antero Air Quality Compliance and the Eagle River Water and Sanitation District. And these are great examples of their ability to track, monitor and quantify impacts to air quality and water quality.
Thank you so much, Emily. Before I dive into our project approach specifically, I would really like to highlight the philosophy that we brought to the table when designing this approach. First, we've split the project into phases, three phases for this project. And we did that to ensure that there is an iterative process wherein each task informs and is informed by the other work that's completed throughout the work. Emily highlighted our complementary expertise and how we each have quite a bit of experience in the area that our other team teaming firms have a high level of expertise in. So this will allow us to have constant communication and ensuring that work is integrated throughout the project to have the best results for the city. This phased approach also does allow for adequate time for data collection as well as a really robust, accessible and equitable stakeholder engagement process. We have built along those lines equity into the process, centering the voices of community members that are underrepresented in Commerce City as well as vulnerable populations. We believe that this is very important to center equity into the process because that also ensures that equity is centered into the outcomes of the process. Throughout this work, we'll use defensible data to inform the city, its stakeholders and community members on sustainability risks and opportunities on air quality risks and opportunities, water quality risks and opportunities. Our goal is really to raise community understanding and awareness of these topics to educate folks in a way that allows for a feedback loop to be created so that solutions are generated that are relevant for Commerce City's community members and are really going to achieve the city's goals in an effective and efficient manner. And then finally, specifically in regard to water quality work, but also in general, we utilize an adaptive management approach to this project. So what that means is that we are ensuring that our decisions that we're making throughout the project are informed by the city's goals and objectives and are relevant to the current state as well as the problems that the city wishes to have solved. So we'll continue to work with you if we're selected throughout the project to make sure that the work that we're doing is meeting your needs and is going to achieve the outcomes and goals that that you hope to achieve. We are flexible and nimble. That's one of the key characteristics that that we Lotus like to highlight is that we are we're really able to to adapt to a project to the needs of the community to make sure that we're achieving your goals. I'm going to hand it over to my colleague Abby to specifically talk a little bit about the public engagement work that that we're hoping to do as part of this project.
Thanks, Julia. So as far as the public engagement goes, we're proposing a mix of opportunities to gather public feedback, generate solutions from people who are closest to the issue, maintain transparency and ensure that we're meeting people where they're at throughout the process. And this overall approach allows us to ensure that solutions are equitable and prioritize health, wellness and economic vitality of Commerce City residents. So first of all, we would like to create an advisory board. The advisory board will be comprised of representatives of the organizations and those who can broker a positive relationship between the city and the community during the development of this plan. The advisory board will also be key in identifying gaps in engagement, brainstorming solutions and ensuring that we gather input from all neighborhoods and residents in Commerce City. We are proposing that the advisory board meet meet monthly and pay them for their time and expertise. You know, understanding that they're kind of a key part of the solution. So secondly, we are proposing a series or a community survey, which will be created in English and Spanish. And we're proposing to continually analyze survey results to ensure that they're representative of the community again. And we're also proposing to do a series of interviews to ensure that we're gathering input from all neighborhoods and that the data are representative of the community. So these computers or these interviews will be conducted on a one on one basis with members of underrepresented and marginalized communities. And again, ensure we're meeting people where they're at. We would also like to host a couple of community meetings, holding them at different times to accommodate different schedules and use different methods to be as engaging as possible in in this virtual world that we're in. And these these meetings will also provide an alternative venue for feedback and comments, review findings and initial data collection throughout the questionnaire and increased visibility and transparency into the project. So lastly, all outreach materials that we are going to be creating are going to be in English and Spanish. We use a language justice model to make sure that that, you know, materials are accessible for whoever wants to access them. And then we're also going to be crafting a series of recommendations for a community education campaign following the development of the city's policies and strategies. So I think, next slide.
Thank you, Abby. As I mentioned, we have split the scope of work. As I mentioned, we have split the scope of work into three phases that will build off of each other in that iterative fashion. The work that we propose completing in phase one and much of the work that we propose in phase two has been fully scoped. There are some remaining air and water quality tasks in phase two, as well as the bulk of the work in phase three that will be scoped in further detail based on the results of the air and water quality monitoring work that occurs in phase one. And again, really taking that adaptive management approach that I mentioned in our project philosophy. We want to make sure that that work specifically in regard to the data collection, the monitoring, the modeling, the recommendations around policy for air and water quality make the most sense possible to the community within the, within the boundaries of what you are able to do and what you would like to do. So that is why we we've allowed for some flexibility in the scope in terms of those activities that happen in phase two and phase three. I'm going to speak in a little bit more detail about the sustainability planning work that we have scoped for phase one. So we'll begin with the greenhouse gas emissions inventory to measure the emissions produced by activities throughout the community. This will give us a baseline of understanding of what the current activities are. And we'll also project out emissions based on a status quo scenario, taking into consideration of factors such as population growth, business growth, known regulatory and policy impacts at the state and federal level, utility announcements, et cetera. Generally, we project emissions out to 2050. We're happy to work with the city on whatever end date seems like it's the most applicable and useful for for planning purposes. But that will really, again, allow us to to have a formed conversation around the data throughout the remainder of the project. A second piece of the work that we'll do in phase one regarding sustainability planning is working with the city to develop a vision of organizational sustainability that can be supported and implemented across the organization. We believe that it's very important that the voices of your staff and leadership are taken into consideration as we develop this vision, as well as the policies and strategies that go along with it. And we've proposed to host focus groups with select staff. Alternatively, we could do a staff-wide, all-staff-wide survey if if the city would prefer to gather feedback from all staff members across the, across the city organization. Having worked in the public sector myself, I can say that our team really deeply understands the process that's involved with gathering buy-in across all city departments and divisions in order to successfully move a sustainability initiative forward. So that will inform the the process and the conversations around developing this vision for organizational sustainability. And then lastly, but certainly not least, we will work collaboratively across our team with the city and and your staff members and with your network of stakeholders to begin to develop community-wide sustainability priorities, policies, and strategies. We anticipate that about 75% of the public and stakeholder engagement activities will incur in phase one, with the remaining 25% occurring in phase two. Again, that just allows for a very robust and accessible engagement process in specifically regarding gathering input and engaging members of the public. So Abby mentioned the advisory board that will ensure the city's community and in particular rural populations and underrepresented community members are centered throughout this process. In addition to that advisory board, we'll also have a broader network of stakeholders that include representatives from the city, from the business community, industry, from major organizations and partners within the community, be that the school districts that are operating in Commerce City, any health organizations, any community-based organizations, to really ensure that we are getting a broad network of stakeholders, providing feedback and input and informing this process. What really excites me about the approach that we've proposed is that in centering the voices of community members, we're able to place strategies and activities that improve community health, wellness, and quality of life at the center of the city's sustainability agenda. This is rather than focusing solely on environmental outcomes like emissions reductions. In this way, we'll ensure that the sustainability strategies and policies that we recommend for Commerce City are the right ones for your community and will achieve the most impactful and beneficial outcomes for the community while balancing the interests of local government, community groups, the business community, industry, and the environment. I'll hand it over to Dustin and Carolyn to speak about our phase one tasks in regard to air and water quality.
Thanks, Julia. So for phase one, air quality deliverables we're planning includes the development of an air impacts inventory that presents current community-wide air quality impacts. And it'll really identify problem areas such as clusters of emission sources that maybe or potentially could negatively impact local neighborhoods. It'll also include the preparation of the air quality monitoring plan. It will present all the details about monitoring methodology, but also build on the first impacts deliverable, talking about how monitoring will really focus on pollutants and geographic areas where monitoring is really needed. Another deliverable will be Commerce City-specific air quality thresholds report. It'll present significance and screening levels for pollutants that would trigger additional requirements that would be compared to by analyses that are done, and such as additional requirements, maybe dispersion modeling, more regular reporting, and then potentially mitigation measures when appropriate. Finally, it'll include an oil and gas plan guidance document to be followed by industry when one needs to be, that plan needs to be prepared. It'll incorporate existing operator agreements, detailed monitoring requirements, and also present ideas for mitigation, again, when that may be appropriate. I'll turn it over to Caroline to talk about water quality.
Thank you, Dustin. Given Commerce City is a third fastest-growing city in Colorado with growth expected to nearly double over the next 20 years, we fully understand your desire to preserve, protect, and improve water quality. And it's our intention, if we're chosen, to support the city through addressing the items listed on this slide that were identified in the city's RFP. To do the best job we can for the city, which is really our primary goal, it's important that we align our evaluations and recommendations to meet your water quality priorities and goals and your vision of community and development. To lay the foundation that will inform the path forward, we first need to gain a solid understanding of the water quality and biological health conditions of the watershed and subwatersheds within the city's boundaries. In conjunction with our preliminary water quality assessment to identify important point and non-point source contributions and gluten loading, we will conduct a review of the city's land use, zoning laws, development code, stormwater program, and any other relevant ordinances and regulations with the goal of providing a constructive assessment and to identify top opportunities that promote and encourage runoff reduction, open space conservation, riparian health, and source water protection. These initial efforts will lay the groundwork for development of a sampling and analysis plan and to prioritize areas for improvement and protection to inform BMPs, including low-impact development in the urban and industrial areas of Sand Creek in the South Platte River, and in the first, second, and third creek drainages.
Thanks, Carolyn and Dustin. So in phase two, we'll continue our engagement on the, on the both public and the stakeholder side, reporting out on the work to date gathered from the gathering community feedback and vetting policy and strategy recommendations with the city and its stakeholders. We'll also during this time develop those marketing materials and the community education campaign recommendations that Abby mentioned in her talk about public engagement. Our final deliverables on the sustainability side will include a modeling tool that analyzes the impact of sustainability strategies on carbon emissions reductions as well as against the other community priorities that we identify through the stakeholder and community conversations. And then we'll also develop a report of those recommended sustainability policies as well as a guidance document on air quality monitoring, modeling, and policy. During this phase, we'll also continue the water quality monitoring and analysis work, building off of what Carolyn just spoke about, and complete other work as necessary for water quality as identified through our work in in phase one with the city.
Yeah, and then in phase three, so phase three air quality will be performing the monitoring that we detail in the monitoring plan developed during phase one. We'll work closely with the city during the development of the plan and will continue to do that during the implementation of the plan during this phase. Our focus will be on getting Commerce City the air pollutant data needed in the most cost-effective but scientifically sound way possible. A rough and high-level description of what would take place is, I would guess that there would be a preliminary sampling period to get some estimated data on hotspots or potential problem areas. Then use affordable new technology monitors such as fence post monitors to collect that data for, I would assume, probably about a one-year period. Um, it's important to know the monitoring can be as basic or as thorough as the city needs. And that's something we look forward to discussing with the city throughout the process to really gauge and get the appropriate idea of how much data and how thorough the data needs to be. The costs can vary widely depending on what is chosen, especially in terms of geographic areas and quantity of monitors. And yeah, our team will work with and guide Commerce City through these choices to make sure we collect the data needed, without excessive information or processes along the way. I'll turn it back over to Caroline for water.
Thanks, Dustin. So with the the phase three for water quality monitoring, it's somewhat of an iterative process, and it really does depend on what the findings are in the initial two phases. But we fully expect that we'll have a final report with policy recommendations and a continued monitoring, as well as summaries of priority areas that have been identified and BMPs to potential BMPs and rough cost estimates for improving those areas.
Great, thank you both. And on that note of cost estimates, did want to provide you with some information on our proposed costs for this project. So I do want to note that the total costs for phase one are firm and fully scoped. The costs for tests four and five that you see in this table within phase two are also fully scoped. But there may be some modifications to the air and water quality tasks based on the phase one work as Carolyn and Dustin have noted, likewise for phase three. But please note that we are committed to providing the highest quality of service to the city in the most cost-effective manner, and we'll work with you to make sure that we can meet your goals and exceed them within, within a reasonable, cost-effective manner. And I realize we've gone a little bit over time, so I do apologize about that. But I just want to wrap up by saying that our team is so very excited at the opportunity to support this work in Commerce City. In addition to our expertise and focused approach, we are a team of passionate, skilled, and dedicated professionals, and we'll collaborate with the city to achieve your goals. Our prior experience, both within the public sector and outside of it in neighboring communities and on similar scopes of work, positions us to really well understand how to manage this project effectively and to ensure that the city's objectives are met. We hope that this work will really result in improved community health, a clear regulatory environment for air and water quality, and sustainability being integrated in Commerce City's everyday work. With that, I'll stop my screen share here and just open it up for any questions.
Questions from council to the applicants? Seeing none, would like to thank you.
You have, you do have one, sorry.
Sorry, I couldn't find my hand. I apologize. And I want to thank you for going first. I don't know if they drew straws or flipped a coin, but there is an advantage to going second. So I thank you for going first. I reached out to some of the communities that were listed on your website, and they were pleased with your work, by the way. And I wondered what you did for Antero, which is the oil and gas company in Appalachia.
Sure, yeah. This is Dustin. That's listed as a project we, that Pinion does, and we manage all air quality work. A lot of their compliance work at a corporate level. So we do all their emissions estimates. I shouldn't say all. There is some that they get a little bit of help with elsewhere, elsewhere. But we do a large majority of emissions estimates, permitting, permit modifications, all that stuff. And we also do their greenhouse gas reporting, and we assist with their corporate reporting for greenhouse gas emissions and how to find those reductions and their sustainability reports that they do under their corporate reporting. So it was listed there to really show our air quality expertise as well as to dip kind of into the greenhouse gas and sustainability world that I know will also be important to this project as well.
I noticed that you didn't make any changes to the contract or did you? Lotus, are you the team leaders?
Oh, apologies, yes.
No, that's okay. You wouldn't know who I was directing this to. That's all right.
Changes to the the contract in terms of the.
Language?
Oh, yes, no, no changes to the contract.
Okay, thank you very much. That's all.
Thank you.
Any other questions from council? Seeing none, would like to thank you for your presentation and for your time this evening.
Thank you so much.
Thank you for joining us.
Thank you.
Mr. Martinelli, you have a second one?
Yes, so it looks like Dylan is closing the the previous group out. And then we're going to be inviting Spirit Environmental and their team to conduct the second presentation. Again, the format will be the same. They'll they'll do a brief 20-minute presentation and then reserve additional time for council to ask any questions that they may have. So once we see Connor Marigan pop on the screen, we'll go ahead and introduce him and the rest of his team. Connor, thank you for joining us.
Yeah, my pleasure. Good to see you tonight.
Are we waiting on other team members from Spirit, or are you going to be giving the presentation?
We do have a number of additional folks. We are going to have three of us presenting, but we have a number of additional people that are going to be on the line as well to answer questions. So I am, it's like they're starting to trickle in.
Okay, once you've got everyone on board you need, I believe you should have screen sharing privileges and then go ahead and take the presentation away whenever you're ready.
Great, thanks, Dominic. I'm going to show you guys yourselves for just one second. All right. I believe we're all here. I can't see everybody now, given the fact that I'm sharing my screens. But I, I think I'm going to go ahead and just get started in the interest of time and to appreciate your time here today. So we are, as I mentioned, we're going to have three of us speaking today. We have some additional staff, both the ones noted on the side, as well as a couple of other folks on our side that were able to join us today. We do have the full proposal details in your packet. And so we're going to provide an overview here, and then we're happy to answer any specific questions that you might have during the Q and A. Briefly, what we're planning on covering today is to give you a quick introduction to the team and why. Look at the scope of services, provide some information as requested on our public engagement approach, talk about our approach to costing for an on-call contract such as this, talk about a few ranges, and then reserve some time for your Q and A. So that.
Connor, just as a note, I don't believe you're currently sharing your screen right now.
Oh, really? Well, that's, that's going to make it, it looks like it is being shared, according to me. Is that, let's see, we manage the technical difficulties here. Let's see. All right, if you guys aren't seeing anything, that's going to be. According to my screen, it is being shared, but so I may.
Connor, if you're not able to get the the presentation shared from your computer, I can certainly share it from mine as well. And then advance the slides.
Yeah, that would be fine. Let me, let me give one, see, I'll try one more thing to see if. Yeah, that would be fine. Let me, let me give one, see, I'll try one more thing to see if it will work. And how's that?
There we go. Now we can see it. Yep.
Great, it's the wrong. All right, so now. Let me switch this. There we go. Can everybody see the agenda?
Yes.
Yes, Connor, we can.
Great, okay, thank you. So I mentioned what I was going to cover here. We're going to end with a Q and A from Commerce City. So so Spirit Environmental is a environmental consulting firm, first and foremost, with deep compliance expertise, extensive industry experience and work with both industry as well as regulators and a sustainability program that focuses on strategic and municipal sustainability planning. We have numerous folks on the call to answer questions that you might have. I just want to highlight a few. We have Tony Barlidge, who's our regional vice president and has deep background in both air compliance work. Keegan Conley is a P focused on greenhouse gas reporting and air permitting. Michelle Foss leads our compliance team and is showing some of the water experience. And Alex Moore Van Dyke is actually splits her time between compliance and the sustainability programs and is going to be serving as my deputy project manager on this project. So we specifically identified best in class local firms to respond to the air and water scopes while managing the environmental policy scope in order to focus in on the integration of those elements while also being able to provide capacity and manage the overall project to continuously identify efficiencies for Commerce City. We have experience managing on-call projects and have also identified and worked with a number of smaller local firms that we can activate as needed depending on what we find in the city's needs, including Anna Mosteiro of Bilingual Communication Services for engagement work and Jerry Tenianow for government policies or and industry contacts along with a host of others. So I'm managing the environmental policy scope, which I'll go into more detail about shortly. But my experiences in project management, strategic planning and certifications in all sustainability from within the government as well as as consultant working primarily at the municipal scale. So with that, I want to hand it off to Katrina to introduce her team.
Good evening. My name is Katrina Winmore Miller and I'm the manager of the environmental compliance section at Air Resource Specialist. I'm a licensed professional engineer. I have a bachelor's degree in chemical engineering and a master's degree in environmental policy and management. In addition to the work that I do as an air quality engineer, I've also served on the Fort Collins City Environmental Air Quality Advisory Board. And I'm currently serving on the Laramie County Environmental Science Advisory Board. With me today also on this call is my colleague Howard Gebhardt. He is a senior manager in the environmental compliance section at ARS. He's a subject matter expert on air quality monitoring and modeling. And then before I turn it over, I also want to mention that another potential member of our team would be Dr. Jeff Colette and his department in the Atmospheric Science Department at Colorado State University. Dr. Colette's not on this call tonight. We would just use him in an advisory mode if we needed to, depending on where the project took us. But I just want to mention that we have that resource on team.
And I'm Jane Clary with Wright Water Engineers here in Denver. We are a local full-service water resources consulting engineering firm. We've been in business for about 60 years. I have, I am the vice president of Wright Waters Water Quality and Regulatory Practice. I've been at Wright Water for 27 years. Also on the call today with me is Dr. Andrew Earls. He and I have been working together on updating your storm drainage criteria manual and we talked to you back in October and are happy to be here again.
All right, thank you, Jane. So we, let's see, is that advanced? Okay, there we go. We chose this picture specifically because it represents the nexus this team was built around of air quality, environment, sustainability concerns and water quality. Power generation by river has all of these elements and represents a practical and tangible asset where these scopes could logically come together. We recognize that the city's locus of control is limited for private enterprise, but also that within those limits, there's room for discussion and adjustment of those limits, and that's within the determination of the city. This project at its core seems to a lot seeks to align Commerce City environmental services with best practices, ensure appropriate data is captured and manage towards outcomes that are defined as successful within the specific context of Commerce City. So our team has the industry expertise, familiarity with environmental conditions in Commerce City, technical expertise and sustainability chops deliver on both specific scope elements identified as well as the environmental priorities sure to emerge during our engagement. So I'm going to start with the first scope and then I'm going to hand it off to our team members here. So in addressing this scope section, Spirit is recommending that the city take what we've coined as an approach as ambitiously practical, while also remaining focused on how these policies will be implemented. This means working with the knowledge of national and regional best practices, but collecting local data and working within the regulatory and even the political context unique to Commerce City. We have proposed an organizational assessment as one of our first tasks that could be done in tandem with the comprehensive planning effort to leverage efficiencies there and then developing initial, a set of initial goals that focus on addressing the highest priority environmental needs from both an immediacy standpoint as well as structural and comprehensive standpoint. So subsequent task orders will be prioritized and executed based on a combination of factors, including priority, funding opportunities, alignment with other efforts and community input. So the specific task items identified in the scope around green building incentives, energy, water and waste efficiency, and even renewable energy are all areas of deep familiarity both with experience in various green building certification systems as well as extensive experience with local governments and utilities looking to encourage adoption of these practices in the community. In broad terms, for environmental management and compliance, including hazards, brownfield soils, Michelle Foss, who's on the call today, can answer any questions you might have, but our compliance team has been implementing and optimizing these regulations for years from the dual perspectives of private industry as well as public agencies. It's also relevant, I think, on this call to mention that our team has a pretty high degree of familiarity with Senate Bill 181 and can bring our experience to bear there on implementing those new requirements. On the land use side and development review framework, that circles back to me where I've worked with multiple agencies, including currently with Adams County in integrating sustainability and environmental criteria into their regulations, plans and processes. And working with Housley Levine should be a smooth process based on previous discussions with them. So the one quick project example that I choose to, I chose to select, this illustrates a recent case where a comprehensive desire for community sustainability was addressed through an iterative process of community engagement, impact analysis and prioritization efforts. I led the effort while I was at another company to limit the 81 initially proposed strategies down to 21 for near term implementation in order to provide a more realistic pathway to success while also building on ongoing community and internal processes to revisit and update these strategies on a predictable timeline to ensure that the plan stays up to date and gets used. In this case, Santa Fe has gone on to reach lead for city's goal and continues to make progress towards their sustainability goal. So now to discuss the air quality scope, I'd like to turn it back over to Katrina.
All right, thank you, Connor. Before jumping into these bullet items you see here, I want to take a second and tell you a little bit more about Air Resource Specialist. Air Resource Specialist or ARS is a well-known, is well-known as an air quality monitoring firm. We have expertise with many different types of air monitoring systems. And we can make sure that any monitoring system when designed and implemented would be best for what Commerce City needs for the objectives that are determined. Our air monitoring programs emphasize quality assurance and quality control. We have a dozen noted QA2C officer that ensures all air monitoring data meets appropriate regulatory or industry standards. We can get you the best return on investment for any air quality monitoring program that is undertaken. We also have a very well-established environmental compliance section that has a great reputation and excellent experience in various industries. And we provide full range of typical air quality permitting and compliance services that are associated with the federal Clean Air Act as well as any local air quality regulations. So onto the bullets. In your request for proposal, you present two broad air quality areas we are seeking assistance from. First, regulatory support for your local air quality regulations with an emphasis on oil and gas development. And then second, assessment of air pollution risks and policy recommendations, or that is various tasks related to an overall goal of assessing local air pollution risks and recommending the policies to address them. We're able to perform these tasks required under both of these areas. We have direct experience in providing regulatory support at a local level and I'll be able to supply more information about that in just a second. Our team knows oil and gas facilities. I personally have worked exclusively with oil and gas facilities for the past 10 years. And during five years before that, I worked frequently with oil and gas facilities as well as a variety of other industries and facilities at other industries. I've also worked with a variety of petrochemical and oil refining facilities as well. Other members of our team have worked with oil and gas facilities and within a large variety of industries. On assessing the air pollution risk and policy development, our goal will be to collaborate with the city by providing technical analysis and interpretation of data along with assessment and discussion of the risks. This work will form the basis for any policy recommendations that would come from that. As I mentioned earlier, we're very well experienced in planning and implementing air quality monitoring programs. We also routinely create and work with air quality emission inventories as these are normally the first step of any air quality project. Lastly, we do perform air quality assessments and modeling work. Howard in particular has a background in meteorology and he has several decades of experience working with air quality models. Next slide, please. Thanks. For our project example, I selected work that we've done with Pinal County Arizona Air Quality Modeling District, Air Quality Control District. ARS staff supplements the district staff in their technical review of air quality permit applications by providing reviews of the application materials such as air quality modeling. We provide comments to the applicants on behalf of the county to ensure that the appropriate guidelines and procedures are followed. We feel that this was similar or the same technical support role that was envisioned by Commerce City for its air quality regulatory program. And now, and in just time, I'll turn it over to Jane, who will discuss the water quality portion of the project.
Thank you. So in your RFP, you had six tasks related to water quality and I list the first three here. And I would say that the work that we're currently doing for you on updating your storm drainage criteria manual really provides kind of a head start in terms of addressing some of your objectives here. And in particular, the work that we've been doing brings your criteria manual up to speed in terms of green infrastructure and law impact development practices that are out there. In addition to our knowledge of what's going on internally at the city, we've also worked with your neighbors, Sidney County of Denver, on a green infrastructure implementation strategy. We work, we're currently working with the Malheur Flood District to update the regional storm drainage criteria manual that includes a lot of green infrastructure and water quality practices. Also, for over 20 years, I've worked on the International Stormwater Best Management Practices database that looks at how different types of stormwater control measures perform for different pollutants like, say, for example, E. coli, which is an issue for some of the streams in Commerce City. As part of the work on your criteria manual, we've already looked through your land development code. Andrew Earls has been through that. And we have a good sense of where different types of practices are appropriate, say for infiltration and areas where they probably aren't due to contamination. Next, please. The second three set of practices really kind of focuses on water quality issues on specific streams and looking at capital improvement projects to address those water quality issues and looking at water quality monitoring. We have a very strong background in the water quality regulations in Colorado. I actually recently finished serving a three-year term on the Water Quality Control Commission for the state. I'm up to speed on issues like PFOS. In terms of capital improvement projects, a real strength of ours is understanding the whole lifecycle cost of stormwater control measures, not just that capital cost, but also what is the maintenance cost for this over, say, a 50-year lifespan? And as these practices are implemented, does the owner have the ability to maintain them? And then lastly, we've, we've put together multiple water quality monitoring programs throughout the front range and metro area and we're very skilled at that. The starting point would be, what do you already know about water quality monitoring in your watersheds? Because there's quite a bit of data out there through South Black Cures, Suncor, the Water Quality Control Division. And so those are some of the the starting points or in background we've been bringing to the water quality.
Okay, thank you, Jane. Appreciate that. So you had asked about our public engagement approach. And while that will be developed as part of the process, we chose to show an image here of an example of one of our engagement tools. This one in particular, Poll Everywhere, is one we like because it allows for real time anonymous engagement in both virtual and in-person settings while also having the side effect of effectively capturing specific data to use for planning purposes. So our engagement approach will be dictated by the specific stakeholder groups we're looking to reach, desired outcomes, current health-related conditions such as COVID, and acknowledgement of the limitations and strengths of different outreach methods. As data scientists and planners, we tend to rely on numbers and stories to capture outcomes. We place a strong emphasis on equitable participation and can leverage the portions I mentioned earlier as well as others, as well as strategic use of social media platforms that can perform translation automatically and even the targeted specific translation to reach some of the more diverse populations within Commerce City. So one key element of an effective engagement strategy as far as we believe and have seen work would be to really identify and empower community stewards. So these people are often leaders, influencers and participators in the community and really need to be valued and respected. Our approach relies on cultivating relationships, meeting people where they are and enabling them to solicit and share information that will actually get incorporated. An important part of that is following up with them to actually let them know how. So community education is going to rely on those stewards as well as a structured set of campaigns that we are able and confident and happy to design with city staff to utilize all available channels to reach residents and businesses. For the particular issues requiring stakeholder groups, together with the city, our role would be to convene and facilitate. Working groups can be established as needed, but again, with a focus on respecting people's time and getting meaningful engagement. Spirit staff has experience with multi-step meetings and will ensure that there are enough people available, the right people, a variety of ways to provide input, underrepresented groups are available and clear and clear objectives and outcomes are provided for each meeting. So in addition, Spirit staff have deep working relationships with local utility providers, composting companies, diversion companies, environmental groups and a variety of social groups in the area to bring in their expertise as needed, whether it's for specific working groups, meetings or even a series of engagements. So as an on-call contract, you had asked about a costing approach and we'll provide some ranges for particular tasks after this. But in general, we have proposed a first round of tasks that we all start with an assessment of where things are at. And then for each task order, our, our intention is to identify ranges, provide our assumptions, work with the project manager and the team to provide different options, submit that task order. Once it's, once and only once it's been fully vetted to be in the best interest of taxpayers and the project. Then in that case, we are very effective at managing the budget, leveraging lower cost resources wherever and whenever possible, and then also identifying supplemental funding when appropriate. And I can give an example of that when I kick off the scope pricing ranges. So we've included a few pretty broad ranges of pricing here. On the environmental policy side, the, we put a number between $10,000 and $50,000 for a community-wide energy action plan. Typically, these run about $35,000 to $50,000 in my experience working with a number of front range communities. But we have the lower range on that number of $10,000 because the, one of the great things about this is that there is the potential to have this paid for entirely by the utility or in the, in the majority part, program is called Partners in Energy. It's with X, it's sponsored by XL Energy. We recognize you have different utilities in the area as well, but that's, that's the reason for the range. Should energy efficiency and renewable energy and a plan to achieve that be a identified outcome and priority. The other one quickly I'll touch on is environmental indicators and success metrics. This is something we're really big on and I think it's important and I believe you do too. For $20,000, we have sort of the internal tool that we have developed with templates and ways to track it and data capture and the full sort of working man's example, the sort of working functional tool. But you can go all the way up to $150,000 with some of the the dashboards that are out there and some of these dashboards are really worth exploring. It would be our job to help, help you navigate whether it makes sense for the city. Some of the functionalities of those dashboards could be, could be a perfect fit, maybe not. So that's. So that's our approach. I want to hand it over to Katrina to talk about a few examples on the air quality side.
Yeah, we've got three examples here of some costs. And the first one would be for review of oil and proposed oil and gas site air quality plans. If that were envisioned as something that you would want us to do, and it's something similar to what we're doing with another county, as I mentioned before, that we think that cost for that would be up to $5,000. That obviously depends on the scope and the complexity of what's being proposed. But that's something that we are very experienced with and feel that we could do with under $5,000. The next thing that we have, developing air quality planning documents, we would envision that being somewhere in the range of $25,000 to $50,000. And that would also depend on how much is being done, how many meetings are needed at the beginning to establish what needs to be done and the path forward, then come up with objectives and goals, and then actually implementing what we decide to do. So developing air quality planning documents has a pretty wide range there, but we would want to hone in on that right away when we first start with some initial kickoff meetings and discussions and collaboration. The third item, air quality monitoring program implementation, that is a pretty wide-ranging number. I can ask Howard to say something on that if he would like to. But basically, air quality monitoring, and I think this was alluded to earlier, that can vary tremendously depending on how many monitors, what kind of monitors, where you're going to put them, your geographic situation with where you're putting the monitors, what you're monitoring for. There's a very wide variety of factors that will influence an air quality monitoring program cost. And Howard, I don't know if you want to quickly pop in and say anything about that, but I'd have mentioned it to you. And I don't know if he has.
All right, I was trying to figure out how to unmute here. Obviously, it depends on a large number of factors, as Katrina said. But I think once the parameters are identified, then we're very capable of honing in on what the real price would be depending on the number of sites. But we do have a lot of experience conducting and implementing monitoring programs. So once we had the basic scope of the program outlined, I'm very confident that we can come and get you a price and get you the most bang for the buck.
So on water quality, there's a range of costs here also. We have a lot of experience on the water quality tasks that you're asking for services under. Just an example on point source and non-point source pollution causes, we have a $10,000 to $50,000 range here. And one of the things that we would emphasize is understanding your starting point and not reinventing the wheel is really important. For example, selenium is an issue in Commerce City, but you already have a lot of knowledge on that related to work that Suncor has done in monitoring that has gone on on Sand Creek. So costs there depend on your starting point in terms of what you know, how many streams and areas you want to look at. The second item, in terms of developing a water quality monitoring plan, what we would say there is you really want to start with, what are your data gaps? What do you already know? You don't need to reinvent the wheel, but where do you need to fill in areas that aren't being monitored? And so again, the cost of a monitoring plan would be, how far do you want to go in terms of analysis to identify those data gaps versus sort of jumping in and just putting a boilerplate monitoring plan out there?
Okay, well, we are going to wrap up here and just talk about a few of the additional items that we believe make us a really good fit for this project. We are already integrated into regional efforts, whether it's Jane and her team's efforts with Commerce City already, whether it's Air Resource Specialists and all the work they've done up and down the front range or Spirit Environmental and our work with operators in the region as well as Adams County on the sustainability plan integration. We're small, local firms, sort of the best-in-class technical expertise. One of the reasons that Spirit is acting as prime is to provide capacity as needed for any of the services that are required, where support might be coming in, as well as to provide effective project management based on our knowledge of the environmental consulting world. We do have a background in planning, which will help for the integration into the comp plan, and then flexibility and responsiveness. These may be common themes, and I really want to give kudos to competitors as well. But this is really somewhere where we are going to shine. So with that, we're going to move into the Q and A.
Anyone on council has any questions for these applicants? Councilmember Noble?
Thank you very much. I'm sorry I'm having trouble with my raised hand motion, so thank you for recognizing me, Mayor. So I'm curious, which of you learned of the RFP? Which company learned of the RFP?
That was us, Spirit.
And, oh, okay. And how did you learn of it?
Well, we saw it when it came out. We'd actually heard rumors that there may be one coming out for a while. There was Jerry Tinianow had mentioned that there were, through his conversations there, said there was some interest in environmental consulting. So I think it's fair to say that without any knowledge of what the details would be, there was some expectation that something would come out at some time. When we saw what it was, that's when we downloaded it from BNET and pursued it from that path.
I'm curious as to why you're making changes to the contract, particularly on accountability. So the warranties are eliminated and replaced with the more minimal standard of care.
Correct, yeah. And I can speak to that a little bit, and then I'm also going to ask for some help from my team members here. But effectively, that particular section is typically, in our experience, more used in the term warranty for construction contracts. The same level of service we provided, that it's more of an issue with the term warranty than anything else. So the standard of care, there's no, we provide the absolute same level. It's just without putting construction, building projects, the term warranty is really what did it. And I don't know, Jane, you may have something to add to that.
Yeah, I'd like for Andrew Earls to chime in on that.
Yeah, I'd be glad to add a quick comment on that. And I agree with what Connor said, there is no difference in the standard of care or the standard of services that would be provided. Our insurers and most professional engineers, in fact, all of them that I'm aware of, are required to have professional liability insurance. And our insurers at Right Water, and I can't comment for all of the other team members, but they tell us that they cannot defend us or provide insurance if we have the word warranty in a contract and we get a claim. So it's really a matter of just insurance terminology. You know, sometimes we live with it if we have to. But Connor's exactly right, warranty is the type of thing you have with a construction project rather than, you know, a consulting project. And I could assure you, council member, that we would be glad to work with the city to come up with some sort of alternative language to work around this issue that would achieve the same objectives.
And why was the insurance coverage changed also?
Oh, that is, and I can't, I'm not positive if that was a comment from Right Water or a comment from one of our team members, but I think it was just to try to make the insurance requirements in line with the type of insurance consulting firms like ours typically carry, if it was a comment from our firm. I'll throw that one back over to Connor in case he has anything to add. And, you know, an option, of course, if you wanted to select the team, is we could obtain additional insurance. So that is something that's also a solvable problem too, although most of our clients find that the level of insurance we carry is more than adequate.
I would just say, echo that, that it was, it's a, we were able to include some additional insurance limits that we didn't need to have changed based on our assumption of that risk as the prime. But I think the, is the insurance you're talking about, in particular, the environmental liability or the environmental insurance?
Yeah, liability.
Right. So that one, that one in particular was just based on the amount of coverage that we have for that particular thing, for that, through our insurer. However, if that was a sticking point, that's, I would echo what Andrew said in that if that really does feel like a substantive material issue, we're certainly willing to work with the city to look at even potentially raising our limit.
And I reached out to Adams County Commissioner about Spirit. And the commissioner doesn't recall voting for Spirit. And I think you may be a sub-vendor to a contractor?
That's correct. Yep, we are a sub-consultant to Design Workshop. Design Workshop is doing, similarly to the planning consultant who's working in Commerce City, they're doing both the, are all the comprehensive plan, the transportation plan, the parks, open space, and trails plan for Commerce City, their updates. And they brought us in as a sub-consultant to do the sustainability integration to all of those three plans.
And Air Resource Specialists, I have questions for you. In your air monitoring and analysis, do you take into account the markers that Detlef Helmig has found in air that pinpoints when it's oil and gas that's in the pollution versus any other use?
Howard, I'd like to refer that one to you, please. Let's see, trying.
I have trouble with mine too, so don't worry about that.
I think you might be on mute, Howard. Okay, there. Thanks for the, yeah, I mean, we're familiar with what he's put out. I think that we're going to, I would say that we're going to evaluate things on a case-by-case basis and that we don't go into any monitoring program with any preconceived ideas as to what is or is not an appropriate marker. We'll use all the available research, including his, to help make that determinations. You know, we know from our own experience what some of the markers are. You know, the BTEx markers are typically associated with oil and gas operations. Those are relatively easy to monitor and detect. For one of our clients, we've implemented a continuous BTEx analyzer, which is kind of state-of-the-art. That would certainly be available for implementation if needed with the city of Commerce City. But I think that I would answer that question as saying that, you know, we're going to go into everything with an open mind and approach it as scientists and not have any preconceived determinations as to what is or is not associated with oil and gas operation.
I do believe that's based on research, actually. I believe it's.
Excuse me, I would say that, you know, his research is certainly part of the inventory of research. And so I'm not discounting it. I'm not saying that we're going to use it exclusively. I'm just saying that we're going to take a credible scientific approach using all available data.
And you noted, I believe, that you've worked with Broomfield?
Oh, we did some background monitoring on behalf of extraction oil and gas for their development in Broomfield. It was baseline air quality monitoring as part of compliance with their operator's agreement with Broomfield. And we conducted that monitoring on behalf of extraction. But we do not have any current contracts with extraction for air monitoring work.
Okay, because I was wondering, I spoke to Broomfield City Council members, and they didn't recall contracting with your firm. So it was confusing, I guess, in the proposal. I noticed, Spirit, that one of your clients is the Colorado Oil and Gas Association. Is that correct?
That is, yeah, that is correct.
And is there any conflict of interest?
Yeah, that's a very astute question. And there, what we have done to avoid any potential conflict of interest there is empower our subs, in this case, Air Resource Specialists, with full autonomy over that particular scope. It's, you know, I mentioned earlier that we had divided it up, air, environmental policy, and water. And that was, you know, that was one of the reasons that we wanted to make sure that we did that. So by doing that, I feel like we've sufficiently mitigated that. And it is, it's, yeah, that's our approach.
Yes, and I think if our city council shows you, I think that there should be a conflict of interest clause in the contract. It would concern me otherwise. I am curious also about the maps in the proposal, the water map, and then also the one that showed brownfields. Do you have those as slides, or are they just in the proposal?
I have one of them that was a filler on the slide, and it was actually the temperature increase. So you're right on the water quality, and the other one was the 36-month average temperature deviation.
Okay, right, right. That was it. And then the, then the water.
Right, water.
Map. Does Ms. Clary have the water?
No, those were generated by Spirit.
Oh, okay.
So, but I'm happy to share our source data there. And any questions that you have there, I can certainly answer them.
Okay, that's all the questions I have. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Sheasley?
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to address the first two questions, Councilmember Noble, that you had about the contract changes. To note, that warranty change is a common item, a request that we receive for modification from professional services providers, and is typically something we work out. And the description was accurate. I checked on the insurance, and it appeared that the change was as to the deductible, which the city as a standard has is $10,000, and the request was to increase that to $100,000, which is something that typically, based on the financial capacity of the vendor, the risk manager or city manager can waive in those items. So they tend to be things that we can work out. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I raised the issue because the other firm did not make changes to the contract. Thank you.
Yes.
Any other council members have any questions for this? Seeing none, once again, would like to thank everybody for your time coming to present and appreciate the thoughtfulness you put forth in putting the proposal together. We have an opportunity for a recess. Are there any council members who'd like a short five-minute recess? Yep, okay, we'll take a five-minute recess, and we will read adjourn at 8:13 PM. Yep, okay, we'll take a five minute recess and we will read adjourn at 8:13 PM. Think we're waiting on one more. I'll go ahead and read the intro to the consent agenda, which is the next item on our agenda. The consent agenda includes items that are routine procedural informational self-explanatory and non-controversial. They are presented to council for a single motion and vote. Any member of council may ask to remove a specific item for further discussion and a separate vote. Tonight, there are four items listed under the consent agenda. Does anyone on council wish to remove an item off the consent agenda for further discussion? Councilwoman Noble?
Sorry, I think I need to remove the November 16th minutes in order for there to be a correction per Mr. Douglas's comments.
Any other council members wishing to remove an item off the consent agenda? Seeing none, I'm looking for a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda as modified. Mayor Pro Tim?
A motion to approve the consent agenda as modified.
And Councilmember Hurst?
All second.
Have a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda with the exclusion of the November 16th meeting minutes. Is there any discussion? Mayor Pro Tim?
Sorry, I didn't mean to have that up.
Mr. Sheasley, did you want to chime in?
No, thank you, sir.
All right, seeing no request for discussion, will the city clerk please read the titles and take a roll call vote?
Resolution 2020-96, resolution adopting the Adams County Hazard Mitigation Plan. Resolution 2020-98, resolution authorizing First Amendment to the Intergovernmental Agreement with Mile High Flood District, Adams County, and the City of Thornton regarding funding of a vision study and project implementation plan for South Platte River Corridor. Ordinance Z-896-12, or, dash, 11, dash, 12, dash, 16, dash, 17, dash, 21, and ordinance approving amendment number three to the DIA Tech Center PUD Zone Document to allow the deviation of setback and floor area ratio standards to be considered through the minor modification process for the property located south of East 84th Avenue, west of Tower Road, north of East 81st Avenue, and east of the Rocky Mountain Arsenal National Wildlife Refuge, Commerce City, Colorado. And I think that's it. Councilmember Madera?
Yes.
Councilmember Alan Thomas? Councilmember Noble?
Yes.
Councilmember Wardiola?
Yes.
Councilmember Hurst?
Yes.
Councilmember Grimes? Councilmember Smith?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Frank?
Yes.
Mayor Hughesman?
Yes.
Passes seven to zero.
Thank you. We had one item that was pulled, which was the meeting minutes from the November 16th meeting. Councilmember Noble, did you wish to continue those minutes until the December 21st meeting?
Yes, please.
Like to motion that?
I'd like to continue the minutes of November 16th to the meeting of December 21st. I move to do.
Have a motion to continue the approval of the minutes of the November 16th council meeting to December 21st. Is there a second? Councilmember Wardiola?
I'll second the motion.
Have a motion and a second to do so. Any discussion? Seeing none, we will do that through a voice vote, so please raise your physical hands so they can be counted on the screen. And that passes seven to zero. That item will be continued to the December 21st meeting, at which time they can be amended to change former council member Douglas's comments. Next on the agenda, ordinance is on first reading. The first is ordinance 2308, which is amending section 2-4201 of the Commerce City Revised Municipal Code. Does anyone on council have any questions for staff regarding this? Seeing none, I'm looking for a motion and a second to introduce by council as seated and approve on first reading ordinances to ordinance 2308. Mayor Pro Tim?
Motion to introduce by council as seated and approve on first reading ordinance 2308.
Thank you. Looking for a second. Councilmember Hurst?
All second.
Have a motion and a second to introduce by council as seated and approve on first reading ordinance 2308. Is there any discussion? Seeing no request for discussion, will the city clerk please read the title and take a roll call vote?
Ordinance 2308, and ordinance amending section 2-4201 of the Commerce City Revised Municipal Code relating to the authority of city personnel to execute contracts. Councilmember Madera?
Yes.
Councilmember Alan Thomas? Councilmember Noble?
Yes.
Councilmember Wardiola?
Yes.
Councilmember Hurst?
Yes.
Councilmember Grimes? Councilmember Smith?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Frank?
Yes.
Mayor Hughesman?
Yes.
Passes seven to zero.
Thank you, sir. Next on the agenda is ordinance 2309, recognition of a C.DOT grant. Is there anyone on council that has any questions for staff? Seeing none, I'm looking for a motion and a second to introduce by council as seated and approve on first reading ordinance 2309. Councilmember Hurst?
Now, I'd like to make a motion to approve ordinance 2309 by council as seated on first reading.
And Mayor Pro Tim?
Second up.
Have a motion and a second to introduce by council as seated and approve on first reading ordinance 2309. Is there any discussion? Seeing no request for discussion, will the city clerk please read the title and take a roll call vote?
Ordinance 2309, and ordinance amending the 2021 budget of the City of Commerce City, Colorado by the recognition of the Colorado Department of Transportation Grant in the amount of $5,000 for clicker or ticket and the authorization of the expenditure thereof. Councilmember Madera?
Yes.
Councilmember Alan Thomas? Councilmember Noble?
Yes.
Councilmember Wardiola?
Yes.
Councilmember Hurst?
Yes.
Councilmember Grimes? Councilmember Smith?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Frank?
Yes.
Mayor Hughesman?
Yes.
Passes seven to zero.
Thank you. Next on the agenda is ordinance 2310, amending the 2021 budget of the City of Commerce City to address homelessness. Is there anyone on council with any questions for staff? Seeing none, I'm looking for a motion and a second to introduce by council as seated and approve on first reading ordinance 2310. Mayor Pro Tim?
Motion to introduce by council as seated and approve on first reading ordinance 2310.
Councilmember Hurst?
All second.
Have a motion and a second to introduce by council as seated and approve on first reading ordinance 2310. Is there any discussion? Councilmember Hurst?
Hand up still, apologize.
Seeing no request for discussion, will the city clerk please read the title and take a roll call vote?
Ordinance 2310, and ordinance amending the 2021 budget of the City of Commerce City, Colorado by appropriating $225,268 from the general fund to address homelessness through intergovernmental and other efforts and the recruitment of a community navigator and authorization of the expenditure thereof. Councilmember Madera?
Yes.
Councilmember Alan Thomas? Councilmember Noble?
Yes.
Councilmember Wardiola?
Yes.
Councilmember Hurst?
Yes.
Councilmember Grimes? Councilmember Smith?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Frank?
Yes.
Mayor Hughesman?
Yes.
Passes seven to zero.
Thank you. Next on the agenda is ordinance 2312, amending the animal code of the City of Commerce City. Will Mr. Sheasley or esteemed city attorney please make the presentation?
Thank you, Mayor. I don't know that I warranted that, but I appreciate it. So tonight, ordinance 2312 is to address long-desired amendment to our animal code regarding breed-specific legislation as well as some supplemental changes to modernize and update the code. Dylan, could we share the presentation, please? The, the ordinance as proposed tonight is essentially what was, or it is what was proposed to council in study session a few weeks back. We can flip to the first slide, please. It's essentially the same one that was presented a few weeks back during the study session with the specific change that council had, that the definition of vicious and dangerous animals treat humans and domestic animals alike. And I'll get to that and point that out specifically, which I believe addresses one of the questions raised by a citizen this evening. The other item that was addressed during citizen comment was fines. The fine schedule is not established by this ordinance where the animal code includes criminal violations, they're punishable as misdemeanors, which have maximum penalties under state law, but there is a fine schedule that could be amended separately at a later time. Where there are civil violations, there are also fines and penalties of a different amount. That would also be amendable. And so the primary purpose of the legislation is removing the pit bull ban registration and slash registration requirement and replacing it with a concept about vicious and dangerous animals. We also clarify that you don't need a prior notice for an animal attack to be a violation. So that you don't need two attacks to authorize impoundment of an animal or citation for a violation of the code. However, those are still discretionary items, depending on what the officer on scene is aware of. We make a number of other clarifications. Most notable, I think, for the community will be the animal disturbance concepts. And so can we get the next slide, please? This is, was reviewed during the study session, where these are the, the specific violations that would really be attributable or cause issues for people with problem animals in the community. Next slide, please. And so this is the definition of a dangerous animal. When the municipal court has determined that it has attacked a person or domestic animal causing physical injury, which is a very broad scope of injury as we define it. In addition to these other items, so this is where one attack causing a simple physical injury could constitute a dangerous animal. Next slide, please. And those dangerous animals, unlike vicious animals, are allowed to maintain residency in the city with conditions set by the code or by the municipal court. Vicious animals, however, are prohibited. And that's where there's been a determination that the attack on a person or domestic animal has caused death or serious physical injury to the person or domestic animal. We're not requiring two attacks on a domestic animal to meet this standard. However, you'll see it below where it is simply physical injury, not serious physical injury to attacks is required to differentiate between dangerous and vicious animals. Next slide, please. And this is a list generally of the automatic conditions that would apply. Confinement, a lot of these are adopted as, from the existing breed-specific legislation, but just now applying based on the characterization of the animal by its conduct. We are adding a registration requirement for such animals, identifying marks, insurance, notification to the city, and limits, as well as allowing the court to fashion conditions to meet, meet the incident at issue. Next slide, please. We had talked about the number of pets at a prior study session. We simply changed this to refer to dogs or cats or a combination thereof, where the existing law is for household pets, which could be any number of things. And we think that that would be more reasonable to just simply define it as dogs or cats, as opposed to any broad number of potential domestic animals, whether the gerbils, birds, that sort of thing. Next slide, please. And then, just to highlight to the community and council, right now, we have an existing, we'll call this the barking dog ordinance, where there's a high burden to establish a violation that typically requires that there be two witnesses to it who are willing to come forward and make a complaint. We are revising that to allow other types of evidence. This should say allows the video as an alternate to a second witness at the bottom there. So if a witness has video, that could substantiate the claim. We also clarify what the type of disturbance could be, where you have, where it's audible beyond your own premises. And then it's persistent habitual or frequent, which means if it's going on for more than 10 minutes and we explicitly write that in there, then it, then it meets the requirements here. However, provoking an animal and causing it to bark excuses the conduct to some extent. So we don't blame animals unnecessarily or their owners. We also are requiring that there be a warning issued to the owner to that address within the prior 12 months so that the system is not abused and that we work to resolve the problem and not just haul people into court. Next slide, please. Hey, there we go. I believe we covered everything at the study session, but I'm happy to answer any additional questions.
Are there any questions for staff regarding this item? Seeing none, thank you very much for your presentation, sir. Are there any council members who want to offer any amendments to this? Councilmember Hurst?
I think mine is more of a question about, just kind of, obviously, this is a direction that we've been talking about for quite some time. One thing I want to think about is, is, you know, the, what's the situation where we get to the impounding and all of that? I think we need to be able to talk further detail about the enforcement actions we take once we do. Not, not suggesting we change that, just about the details in which, once, once you turn over, you know, you're forcing someone to turn over their family pet, whether it's vicious or not, what's the processes that we must follow then? And at least clearly define those for obvious reasons, right? You know, it could be the best dog today and then obviously something terrible happens and all of a sudden you're, you're forced with that as well. So be bad for both sides. I just want to make sure we're clearly defining those processes and they're not some, you know, ambiguous process that nobody, we're kind of making up as we go if that happens. Because if that happens, we need to be more prepared. I'm pretty sure you guys are ready, ready to go for that. I just want to make sure we clearly define that.
Yes, Mr. Hurst. Yes, Mr. Hurst. Thank you for that. I've been accused of of over clarifying things sometimes. But we we are clarifying the impoundment section of the animal code that already exists. We do have a high concern for due process and property ownership. Animals are considered property and depriving people of property. They're considered property under the law. I'll say that. I don't want to draw anyone's ire, though the we want to make sure that we are not depriving people without in violation of constitutional requirements. And so we have a high degree of of process laid out in here with notification of times to object and to, if your animal is designated as vicious or dangerous, to request a review of that designation before any, any potentially dispositive action is taken of the animal. There's lots more notice regarding that, I believe, and then we do, you know, but it does have certain discretion still built into the off into the animal control officer as to whether they actually impound an animal. But they're not doing it willy-nilly for certain, not only for due process and constitutional reasons, but for resource reasons.
Right. And I just wanted to make sure that we clearly define that in this discussion tonight, because you know, obviously, there's concern that that could be abused, but I just wanted to clearly define that we have a process in place to start. Thank you.
Councilmember Noble.
Thank you very much. I had a a meeting today with representatives of Oakwood Homes and was talking with them about the fence situation and what could be done about it. So when reunion's development plan was introduced 20 years ago, the concept was this was farmland and the fencing would reflect farmland, therefore it's four feet tall and open slots. I asked if there was flexibility, could we change it? And it was pointed out that it has now been codified in Commerce City's building code. Only streets that are on main arteries can have higher fences or solid fences. Otherwise, all other fences are the open four-foot style. I am someone who walks around the community a lot, and I avoid streets when I learn that there is a dog that has a particularly vicious bark. But at the same time, I can't be in a position of condoning lifting the pit bull ban because of the nature of the fencing in the reunion area, which is a big portion of word for. Would there be a possibility, Mr. Sheasley, of having two votes, one on the pit bull ban and one on the rest of the ordinance?
As structured right now, no. The removal of the breed-specific legislation is intertwined with the rest of the animal code revisions. It's a wholesale item. If council wanted to propose that sort of action, they could direct us to come back with an ordinance that separates that out and and brings forward the disturbance and corrective measures. But everything else is intertwined in the the breed specific. We'd have to take a look at how that worked. I wouldn't be able to facilitate that this evening.
And I would really request that we take that opportunity to do so. I know that I'm in the minority from previous conversations on the pit bull ban, but I just can't in good conscience condone it in this area. Sixty-five percent of deaths caused by dogs involve a pit bull, and that's just too high a statistic for me to ignore in good conscience.
Are there any other questions for staff regarding this item? Seeing none, I'm looking for a motion. Councilmember Madera.
Move to introduce and approve ordinance twenty-three, twelve on first reading.
Mayor Pro Tim.
I'll second that.
Have a motion and a second to introduce my council as seated and approve on first reading ordinance two, three, one, two. Is there any discussion? Seeing no request for discussion, will the city clerk please read the title and take a roll call vote?
Mayor Hughesman, I believe councilmember Hurst had his hand raised. I'm sorry.
Remember, Hurst?
Yeah, sorry. My mouse like blacked out my screen. Yeah, I think my discussion, just on the whole thing, I would have to say is similar to councilwoman Noble. I'm not still on the fence about the the breed specific. For similar reasons, just just seeing how easy and how frequent dogs get out in our area. Although I'd say 99% of them aren't pit bulls that I see too. So but it is just in general tons of dogs out all the time, and so I I'm concerned about that, but was interested to, you know, hear how we could rework that. I don't know that, you know, I'm on the fence like that. I really want to see the rest of the language go today, like for me, that that's seems to create a good baseline, like we, we have to proceed with that side of it. It's just I'm not completely sold on that. I think, you know, just trying to talk it out and like listen through what everyone's going to say. I was hoping more people had discussion and more people would speak on it from from a citizen perspective, but I'd really like to see, you know, the rest of it go through tonight. I will, I will vote towards that, but I think we need to have a game plan moving forward to, you know, maybe some follow-up action after legislation's passed.
Mr. Sheasley.
Thank you, mayor. To follow up on my prior response to councilmember Noble. Tonight is first reading of the ordinance. It's not approved until second reading and amendments can be offered at that time. And so if council wants to approve it on first reading tonight and then vote on second reading on an amendment that would reinstate pit bull requirements, we could take that up as a as a motion following first reading or yeah, the the motion right now is to approve it on first reading. There could then be direction to prepare an amendment that would reinsert breed-specific prohibitions appropriately.
I appreciate that. Thank you for weighing up the options.
Councilmember Madera.
So I I think we're all kind of afraid of what we don't know, and, you know, there's a lot of misconception around this breed and you know, we're kind of all assuming that all the pit bull owners aren't going to follow the rules. You know, like Ms. Nobles, or Councilwoman Noble alluded to, the fencing requirements in reunion wouldn't be sufficient for having one of these dogs in in your backyard. So, you know, the owners obviously have to be responsible and and we have to, you know, give them the the choice and the right to to prove that they can be responsible owners, but you know, we we never give them that chance, and you know, the truth is that people are going to still going to have pit bulls. And, you know, they have them right now. So, you know, it's kind of just bringing them out of the shadows and, you know, to me, it's I know some people are scared, but you know, my experience is I had a pit bull and it was the best dog that I ever had. You know, the German Shepherd that I own was the one that you should have been worried about. But, you know, the the pit bull was a kind dog. So to me, you know, it goes to the owners. And, you know, that's why I think we developed some rules around it, and I know it's not an easy decision, but you know, blaming this on the animal isn't fair to to the animal, especially just one breed when, you know, like we heard before, all these attacks that people have been complaining about, not a single one has been a pit bull. You know, they've all been different breeds, so, you know, I I think that that's the reason I'm in support of this ordinance is, you know, let's stop blaming the breed and, you know, hold the owners responsible when there's incidents.
Mayor Pro Tim.
So I I'm I'm in support of this just because I I don't feel that it's always going to be the pit bulls, and there are a lot of instances like councilmember Madera said about other breeds of animals, and my concern is making sure that we you know, take care of all the animals that are dangerous and vicious and making sure that they're protected. If you have an animal, I understand what the short fence is. I live on a lot with a short fence. So, you know, I have a dog that can jump the fence. So in my opinion, it's my responsibility. I chain her up before she actually goes outside, and she wears the chain outside, and then she comes back in with a chain, and that's what I do, you know, as a as a pet owner, knowing that my dog can jump the fence and and she scares people. So I I think, you know, there's things that can be done, and I just, I I don't think that it's just pit bulls that are that are dangerous or vicious, and I and like councilman Madera said, I mean, it's also kind of the owners and how they raise their dogs, and so that's why I'm, you know, in support of going this direction.
Councilmember Noble.
We did, we did have a one of the speakers, one of the resident speakers in recent weeks who had had a dog attack and attacked she and her mother on the doorstep when they were just stepping out with their dog was a pit bull in fact. I know this because it was my board.
Any other discussion on this item? Seeing none, old city clerk, please read the title and take a roll call vote.
Ordinance two, three, one, two and ordinance amending chapter four of the of the Commerce City Revised Municipal Code, commonly known as the animal code to remove breed-specific regulations and address dangerous and vicious animals, to amend animal disturbance regulations, to amend procedures relating to animal impoundment and disposition, and to amend other provisions relating to the regulation of animals in the city of Commerce City. Councilmember Madera?
Yes.
Councilmember Alan Thomas, councilmember Noble?
I am going, I am in support of any of the provisions regarding vicious animals. I am voting no because of the lifting of the pit bull ban.
Councilmember Wardiola?
Yes.
Councilmember Hurst?
Yes.
Councilmember Grimes, councilmember Smith?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Frank?
Yes.
Mayor Hughesman?
Yes.
Passes six to one.
Thank you. Next on the agenda is ordinance two, three, one, three, the South Platte Crossing Building Purchase. Will John Borjali please make the presentation?
Honorable mayor and council, Mr. Gibson, if you could, please pull up the presentation. So ordinance two, three, one, three, next slide, please, Dylan. This is to allocate money specifically for the remodel that the city will have to undergo that we had discussed as one of the costs included in the total cost for this, for the space. Estimated about $1.2 million to do a full commercial remodel of this floor to have it ready for potential tenants. However, council envisions the future use of the space. This would be the first step towards getting there. This estimate was developed by our facilities team. Next slide, please. Ordinance two, three, one, three allocates a total of $1.259 million for the project. 1.2 million is for the actual remodel of the space to take place after the city takes possession. And the additional $59,000 is to backstop funds that were already charged to the project account to refill it, so there is enough money there to actually make the purchase on the closing date. Next slide, please. This is just an overview of the the floor plan. You can see it's mostly open concept. There are two large rooms with a few smaller offices attached to it as well as a break room. All of these spaces will need a full refit. They're currently minimal furnishing in the offices and nothing in the open areas. Next slide, please. And this is not something on the ordinance tonight, but just something that, you know, staff will be coming back to council in the future about this building, just items to continue considering as we continue to do research on our end to bring you options, which will be the the use of the space, whether the space is, as council's, I think, leaning currently is geared towards use of nonprofit partners, whether it'll be used by city services or other potential uses. Additionally, what the business model, business model for the space will be whether council envisions providing the space at no or a nominal cost to any partner organization, charging full market value or somewhere in between to recoup some of the costs. And the final point to consider is how this property will be managed. Currently, the city doesn't own any property that it lets out, so we don't have the capability to to serve as a landlord, essentially. So that's something that either we would have to dedicate staff time towards property management or something that would have to be contracted out. And so that's something that as staff continues to do diligence on our end to bring you options and and a little bit more flushed out analysis of what this will look like, these are just some items to consider that we hope to bring you in in the next weeks. Next slide. So any feedback or questions from council? If council does approve the ordinance, then the city will bear the cost for remodeling. These costs could potentially be recouped later if council envisions charging some amount of rent for the space. If council does not approve this ordinance, but we still continue with the purchase of the space, then any future tenants will have to bear the cost of the remodel unless council at a later date chooses to authorize a similar appropriation. Are there any questions from council?
Are there any questions? Mr. Madera.
So if we approve this ordinance, what's the timeline for remodeling?
So currently, the city will take possession on January 23rd pending another amendment with a couple other items to the purchase and sale agreement. And work could then begin on the the contracting and bidding process up through our facilities team. I'm not entirely sure what exactly the timeline for a remodel would be from there of a January 23rd would be the the current closing date.
I guess, kind of to expand on that question, are we planning on reaching out and you know, kind of sorting out who our tenants are going to be and what the need for that space is going to look like before we start remodeling or the plan to just, you know, as soon as we acquire the property to remodel and then, you know, fill it with tenants?
Definitely, the staff will, you know, as council kind of part of, part of what information staff will need from council as we look for potential tenants will be how that space will be used or or what the business model is. If council envisions charging closer to market value, that'll limit out some of the potential tenants that could be in the space. If it's closer to a nominal or or no-charge rent, then that would open up more potential candidates for for use in that space. Depending on how the remodel is designed and how many tenants council or staff envisions having in that space, that would slightly affect you know, whether or not we have to put in into conditional interior walls if there'd be more than two tenants. Work could begin fairly quickly after the city does take possession of the of the space. But I I'm not at this time entirely sure how how the exact timing of when we'd be looking to lease the space up versus when the remodel would be completed.
Okay, I I guess, you know, how did we arrive to this amount then?
This is based on on facilities team estimate for a a basic remodel of commercial office space.
So it could be more or less?
It could.
Go ahead.
Oh, it it could be a little bit more, it could be a little less. Some of the, you know, this would include basic furnishing as well as, you know, redoing carpet. There are some needed drywall repairs and and ceiling tile repairs as well. And these, some of these are are costs that we've backed. Um, and these, some of these are, are costs that we've backed out from the capital costs that were presented, uh, as those were items that were included there as well. Uh, Mr. Tinklinberg, do you have more detail on the, on the estimate or potential other costs associated with remodel?
No, I, I don't have other additional detail. I was just going to, uh, convey to council. The reason we brought this to you now is we had to, uh, top up the fund, if you will, or replenish the fund for the purchase itself. And so I thought as long as we're doing that, let's bring the 1.2 million for the remodel as well. Uh, that way we don't have to go through another ordinance, uh, once we have further direction in terms of the model. Excuse me, the model that, uh, council wants to pursue. So that was the reason for, for bringing that part of it to you at this point.
Thank you.
Councilmember Noble.
Uh, thank you. Um, now I actually considered this part of due diligence. What would it cost us to remodel? And I'm curious, what was the thinking in not bringing it to us before? The vote was taken on the lease.
Uh, ma'am, I, I do believe that the, the cost of remodeling the space was included in the, uh, full financial analysis presented. Uh, when last council discussed the purchase and sale agreement. Um, if that's, if that's what you're referencing in, in that full approximately $10 million amount or $5 million amount over the next 10 years.
Right, it was.
Well, the, so we're talking about a hundred dollars a square foot essentially. And this would be in the near term. So this is expensive, would need to be expended in the near term. Mr. Tinklinberg, I have a question for you also.
Yes, ma'am.
Um, what were you able to find out from, uh, community reach about their building?
Um, I have not received a return phone call. When I talked to the executive director last, he had said that, uh, you know, the asking price was approximately $1 million.
And that in itself was, um. Almost two acres. Plus a building and another building. Is there any, um, and we're looking at over $2 million for 11,000 square feet?
The community reached building, uh, you're correct about the acreage, uh, it's 1.87 acres. Uh, the building is 9,000 square feet plus a basement of about 7,000 square feet. The garage, however, in the back, that building that's in the back, uh, is not part of this property. It belongs to Adams County.
Okay, great. Thank you very much. Okay.
Councilmember Hurst.
You know, I had very similar, uh, line of questions that Councilmember Madera had about, um, timeline for remodel. I think with that type of money, you know, I agree with that, but that was discussed about, um, just. You know, what it would take to keep the building up, uh, get it back up to date. Um. I think with that type of money though, I just would want to make sure that we quickly establish some expectations and. You know, if that 1.2 million doesn't see. Um. We don't have the ability to spend all, you know, spend that money in 2021 with, that we look to return that money. And then, you know, have another discussion next budget session, uh, for the 2022 plan. And so, you know, just, just 1.2 million dollars, a lot of money. I think if there's, you know, the expectation is we, if we approve this. That building starts to get used, you know, in 2021 at some time. Um, and if it's not, then let's have some options as to how we return the money and push it off till 2022. I guess that, that's kind of. What I was hoping for is, you know, an expectation that goes along with that 1.2 million.
Any other questions for staff regarding this? Seeing none, I'm looking for a motion in a second. Councilmember Hurst.
Motion to approve.
Uh, looking for a motion in a second to introduce by council seated and approve on first reading ordinance two, three, one, three.
Yeah, sorry, my computer screen blacked out. Um, motion to approve by council seated on first reading ordinance two, three, one, three.
Councilmember Madera.
Second.
Have a motion in a second to introduce by council seated and approve on first reading ordinance two, three, one, three. Is there any discussion? Councilmember Hurst.
Uh, failed to put my hand down, apologize.
Seeing no request for discussion, will the city clerk please read the title and take a roll call vote?
Ordinance two, three, one, three, and ordinance amending the 2021 budget of the city of Commerce City, Colorado. By transferring 1,259,000 dollars from the general fund to the CIPP fund. For costs associated with the South Platte Crossing Building Purchase and Remodeling Project, an authorization of the expenditure thereof. Councilmember Madera?
Yes.
Councilmember Alan Thomas, councilmember Noble?
No.
Councilmember Wardiola?
No.
Councilmember Hurst?
Yes.
Councilmember Grimes? Councilmember Smith?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Frank?
I believe she dropped off the meeting.
Okay, uh, thank you. Uh, Mayor Hughesman?
Yes.
All right, I have one, two, three, four ayes, one nay, and three excused. I believe that passes unless city attorney Sheasley can correct me.
Should be four.
Oh, four, yep, I apologize.
Mr. Sheasley, is that a pass or a fail?
Can you count the, the vote number? I thought you were asking the total.
Four ayes, two nays, and three excused.
Oh, it's, um. Or I, it's, it's a majority. It's, it's not a majority of the council total. It's a majority present. So that would be a majority and it's approved.
Okay, perfect, thank you.
And just to verify with six members, we still have a quorum.
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you. Uh, so that passes four to two with, uh, three excused absences. Um, do we need to excuse the mayor pro temp since she dropped off the meeting?
If you don't anticipate her return, um, I don't believe that it's necessary, but I think you could ask if there's any objection to excusing her.
Is there any objection to excusing her? No, okay, seeing none, we'll continue. We have one more ordinance, which is two, three, one, five, amending the Commerce City Revised Municipal Code and further amending the model traffic code. Mr. Sheasley or city attorney, please make the presentation.
Thank you. I've lost my esteemed title. Dylan, could we bring up the presentation, please? Again, this is an ordinance, uh, 2315 that council discussed recently on November 23rd at a study session. The ordinance as presented is, are primarily the concepts presented to you that night. With the exception of addressing recreational vehicles and trailers and work trucks. And with the change of the recommended parking time, um, in residential districts that had been proposed at 72 hours being reduced to 24 hours. And so the ordinance, um. Adjust the parking in residential districts, um, from five hours to 24 hours, which council tended to indicate was an acceptable amount of time. Um, unless it's in front of the car owner or user's own residence. It also confirms homeowner association authority to do private enforcement of covenants against property owners. People that are subject to the covenants themselves through appropriate means, uh, which is, uh. Does not involve actions on the city street itself or against members of the public who aren't parties to the covenant. Um, and then there are minor changes to related provisions throughout the code and then adjusting our towing standards to mirror state law. Uh, next slide, please. Again, as noted, um, council asked for a deeper dive on RVs, trailers and work trucks and as well as. Evaluating an opportunity to engage a parking enforcement vendor that I believe the police department is working on now. Um, council also, uh, was presented with an option to increase parking fines. That's done through a separate vehicle. And so we're going to try and do that on second reading as well. Um, and that is it for the parking discussion unless there are any questions.
Any questions for Mr. Sheasley on this? Councilmember Madera.
Yeah, just one. Um, I know RVs, trailers and work trucks is a significant topic, which is why, you know, we kind of. Separated this one to talk about it more. Um, do you know when, um, do you expect to have that in front of council again?
I have not discussed with the, uh, chief of police, the timing of putting that back on the agenda, but we, we do acknowledge it's, it's a priority issue and are looking at very early in 2021.
Thank you.
Councilmember Wardiola.
Mayor, I have two questions from a resident. Um, uh, Mr. Sheasley, one is, uh, in section B, page two. Uh, the city manager can issue oversized permits. How many per residents, uh, can the city manager allow and for how long? And does council have any say in that?
So going backwards, no, council say is in enacting, I mean, no, yes. Council enacts the ordinance that sets the policy and delegates the authority of the city manager. But I just want to note, this section is an existing section in the code. And what we're really doing is, is clarifying some of the terminology to make sure it's clear what it means. And to include the HOA enforcement options, this is an existing permitting program. And it doesn't involve parking on streets. This is parking on private property in residential areas. Now again, this is going to be subject to any applicable homeowners association covenants as well, but the city is not involved in the enforcement of those. I don't know of any maximum number. I think it will depend on the vehicles themselves, the size of the lot, the character, the adjacent property, most likely. Um, but that is, um. I hope that answers the question.
Now, thank you. And then the second question, uh, they also said that in section 1145, it states the city manager. Determines its sale vehicle if it's abandoned for a period of time. Um, they were wondering, how does that happen? Do they sell it to an auction house or do they put it on a public auction? How does that happen?
Again, this is, yeah, this is an existing section, um, that's been in the code for, for many decades. Um, I don't know the exact process. I believe the city's towing vendor conducts the auction. Um, after it goes through a number of notice procedures, the chief of police may have information on that. But, um, if not, I, I think we could get that information back out to you.
Cool, thank you.
Councilmember Noble.
Uh, thank you. Um, Mr. Sheasley, in terms of HOAs. Um, my understanding is that some of the HOAs haven't been taking action because of the city's laws. Or this ordinance. So is there any language in this that, that says, uh, sort of the same thing that the new COGCC stuff does? That it, that the city is the base and an HOA can have, uh, stricter, uh, parking regulations?
To an extent, um, the difference being HOAs don't have the authority to enforce actions on public streets or against the general public. They're not a quasi governmental entity in any way. And where we have public streets. Um, public laws apply to that. HOA covenants are private contracts essentially between property owners within the area. And so we have attempted to clarify for HOA enforcement purposes in a manner that other communities like Thornton have done. That allows, um, we, we clarify to say, we are not trying, nothing in our laws, I'll quote the exact language. It's, it's in several places throughout here. Nothing in this section shall be construed to limit the private enforcement of any private covenant within any residential district as between parties to such private covenant. And so if you are a homeowner in an area and you're subject to an HOA covenant, that HOA may be able to enforce its covenants against you. That is a private matter between the. Property owner and the HOA and the other property owners there. And there are mechanisms through their HOAs, um, for enforcement there. But if you're a public member of the public that is not a party to that, then you're not. Party to that covenant, you're not a property owner that's subject to that. And so the HOA is enforcement. The city doesn't have anything addressing. The legality of that, but the city has previously issued a cease and desist order to HOAs or metro, a, an HOA or a metro district. I don't recall as to on-street enforcement against the general public.
So the cease and desist was for what? For towing and booting?
Booting and towing, possibly even ticketing. The city was not endorsing that. I believe it was booting at the time was the issue in question.
If you, if you can't, uh, let's see, ticket in the sense of fine, are you, are you, are you equating ticketing with fining someone?
I'm equating touching the vehicle with anything, any physical enforcement on the street. Um, but an HOA should know if there is a problem vehicle, who, what property owner that is associated with. And if they are aware of a problem vehicle that's violating their covenants that they believe extend to the street. And whether it does or not is up to the property owner to determine with the HOA. Then I'm of the impression that HOAs have fine structures in place and they send that directly to the property owner. Now, whether it's the property owner's vehicle or a guest of the property owner that's causing the particular problem.
Okay, and, and I think that this is, this is important and for, for the reason that. I think what we're trying to do here, at least I am from my point of view, is for us to become more responsive. To concerns that have been expressed to us by residents in Commerce City about parking issues. And I have been told. That that has been described differently to them. In one case on social media, someone recently got a ticket and was told by a police officer that, um. The city council is wanting people to be ticketed more often. Which is not what we're aiming for here. And in another case, a person told me that she was in court and was told the same thing. By someone in the city attorney's office that we are wanting to ticket people more often. And she used the words thrown under the bus to describe us. And I just want to make it clear that all we're trying to do is to find a way to be more responsive. To the residents who have come to us repeatedly with complaints about parking issues and we want them addressed. We don't just want a, um. An ordinance change, but to actually have these things addressed so that people's quality of life. And their peace and enjoyment of their neighborhoods are, uh, protected.
Thank you for relaying that information to me. I won't speak for the chief, but for my office, I'm going to look into that. And, um, I don't. Approve of that type of behavior. If that comment was made, I think it's unprofessional and not reflective of, of the facts or how we should conduct ourselves. So thank you for letting me know.
Are any other questions on this item? Seeing none, does anyone on council wish to offer any amendments? Councilmember Hurst.
I just had a quick topic and I guess it's asking for a future amendments is, you know. I think this, we have to continue looking at, at this as kind of a dynamic process because. Um, just in 2020, we have different issues than we did in 2019. I mean, obviously different scenario in the world, but. And just recognize that this one might not be the last time we talk about. I mean, obviously we sought to work out the campers and the work trucks. But I mean, from this, from ti- this particular view, we might have to try something else that works differently next year. Um, and, and that's really, also what I'd like to reach out to our residents is that. We're trying to be fair at the same time and consider, um, but. This, this is a tough one too, especially when we get into the tougher topics of work trucks and RVs and things like that. So we have to be, be willing to be flexible on this and, you know, try to get this right. And we understand that each, each time, you know, we'll, we'll be trying to tweak it so it gets better and better. But, um, this is a tough one for me just because I see, um, the potential, you know, we're trying to solve one problem. Are we creating two more? And, and that's really what I'm hoping that we can avoid. So, um. I appreciate. I appreciate all the hard work that's been gone, that's gone into this and trying to balance everybody's perceptions. Thank you.
Are there any other questions? Are there any council members that wish to offer any amendments to this ordinance? Councilmember Hurst.
No, I'm trying to get my mouse fixed, sorry.
Seeing none, before we have a motion, I would like to offer an amendment. I'd like to move that the section dictating that parking in front of somebody else's house is allowed for 24 hours is stricken and that the five hour limit remain.
Mayor, if I may, just, this is a, a first for the council. I was trying this out in the script tonight as an option. So we don't have confusion over what's pending to offer an amendment before the motion on the ordinance. So council can act on that and then vote on the ordinance as amended. So the mayor has just made a motion, if that was unclear to anybody, to strike and, or strike and return to the original of the time for parking in front of a residence. So he would be looking for a second.
Member Hurst.
Yeah, I'd second that, you know, with, with the opportunity for discussion.
I have a motion in a second to amend the proposed ordinance so that it maintains the five hour limit for parking in front of another individual's residence. Is there any discussion on that amendment? Councilmember Hurst.
Yeah, actually, that's the, that's one of the parts that I struggle with the most on this one because that's a solution that we're, you know, we're trying to come up with a solution that may cause more grief than the original way. And so the, the reason I say that is, you know, you may be having people putting out cones and stuff. If they're having a birthday party and really, you know, want to save spots for their family members and then someone shows up and they go hiking, you know, they're going to go climb a 14er for the day. Now they're just absolutely, you know, their whole plans are ruined or whatnot. So it, it's a tough one. That, that's really what I was referring to is there's some of these things that I want to help with the solution, but I'm not sure the solution, any solution we go, won't create other issues. And so that's why I second that. I'd like to, you know, I'd like to get a vote on that one just because I think that one's a tough one for me to get off the fence on.
Councilmember Noble.
I just have a point of order, a question for Mr. Sheasley. Can you please explain to me why I was unable to remove the pit bull ban from, you know, I could have amended with the pit bull ban. Why wasn't that presented as an option?
It, it's not possible to accommodate that level. The, the animal code ordinance was many, many pages with very discreet edits. And this is one word or one, one phrase from an ordinance. And so I wouldn't be able to accommodate that type of ordinance and immediately, that type of amendment in the meeting tonight. That's why I offered, after I had a chance to think about it, the opportunity to amend it on second reading, which would be an option here as well. But if there were specific changes to the ordinance, we couldn't just reinsert pit bull or the breed specific ban.
Mayor, could you please explain your amendment? I don't understand what's happening here versus what it was.
In the draft ordinance, it removes the five hour limitation of parking in front of another residence that is not your own. And my amendment is to make sure that that five hour limit on parking in front of a residence that is not your own remains as part of our traffic code.
Okay. So it was always that way, that it was five hours in front of anyone else's home?
Yes, it's been, you're not allowed to park in front of somebody else's home for longer than five hours. This would remove that restriction and allow it to be up to 24 hours, which I'm trying to avoid.
And I agree with that because whenever I see people discussing the parking ordinance online anywhere, they always raise the five hours. And I don't want to confuse people by extending it because that's all it will do. They know it's five hours. They tell each other it's five hours. So I agree with that.
Let's remember Madera.
Yeah, this is the one piece of that I struggle the most with too, just because, well, on the one hand, you have enforcement. It's difficult to enforce, you know, you rarely get a police officer that's free to come in the first place to come look at this vehicle parked in front of your house, let alone have them come back to your house twice in a five hour time period. So, you know, that, that to me is just tough. You know, I think 24 hours is, you have your, your same issues in terms of forcibility just because, you know, if it's hard enough coming five hours later, getting another shift or, you know, two shifts down to, to come, you know, 24 hours later, that's going to be difficult as well. But for me, the, the five hours really just enforces that sense of entitlement that people have to park in front of their home. And, you know, it kind of exasperates the, the problem and having this mentality that this is my parking space, no one else can park here. And, you know, really that's not the way it is, right? It's, uh, it's street parking. It's everyone's for everyone. And so, you know, the, the five hours is kind of arbitrary, you know? Where that came up from is, you know, could have been two, could have been three, could have been 10. I just think, you know, what, what constitutes five hours, at least, you know, 24 hours is something where you give someone a chance to move their vehicle. So, you know, if they're visiting a neighbor and they're having a dinner party or something, then runs over the, the five hours. I just think we have, well, you know, police enforcement in general have a lot of bigger issues that they need to address most of the time before they can get to these types of calls. So I think, you know, having that short timeframe just allows for that many more calls that they're going to have to follow up on. And, you know, they may not be able to, to show up, at least with the 24 hour. You know, you can tell people, hey, look, it's 24 hours. Has this car been there that long? They'll say, you know, no. Then it gives a little more leeway for not just the person parking, but also for the police officers to really focus on the serious offenders and not just, you know, your, your neighbors, family and friends that are there for, for one evening.
Councilmember Wadiola.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, I would like to get Chief Nichols's input, five verse 24 on the enforcement standpoint and the reality of it, if he's on.
Thank you, Councilman Guardiola. And council, I am available. Uh, I'm on my, my mobile connection. So if I turn the camera on, it gets all splotchy. So I apologize in advance for that. I don't really have an opinion regarding that. This is totally council's purview to decide. I believe that Councilman Madera certainly makes a poignant argument with regards to five hours is going to be tough for us to enforce. And my personal opinion, and this is not the position of the police department, is there is sort of an entitlement that that area in front of my house is mine and nobody else's. That could potentially, it has caused problems in the past. Five hours is as simple as attending a birthday party or a retirement party. And we're asking people to reshuffle all the cars because you parked in front of somebody else's home. The 24 hour window certainly gave us a lot more opportunity, but the police department will deal with whatever council decides. Hopefully that answers your question, sir.
Yeah, thank you. And yeah, that's, that's, that's a tough one. So thank you.
Councilmember Hurst.
Yeah, I hear you. And that's why, that's why this one's tough for me is because I think, I think it's tough to enforce both. And what I, what I tend to lean towards is that there's a lot of really good people that live in our city. And if you put the law there, a lot of people want to follow it. And, and so five hours to me is just courtesy. And if I, if, if my, you know, in-laws are coming or something like that, and I feel like I'm going to be parked a little bit in front of my neighbor's house, I'll knock on the door and ask if it's okay if we go a little bit extended a bit beyond the five hours. But if I plan on having a party with several people coming over, I know, I knock on my neighbor's door and let them know that, you know, we plan to have people over, but, you know, that's an expectation of myself, not of our whole community. I just tend to lean towards, we have good people in our community. We set rules and kind of expectations out there and they'll follow them. I think we give the discretionary, you know, options to our police, police department to realize that this is a bigger problem than I had my buddy over and it turned into be a seven hour event instead of a five hour event, you know? You know, did, did that neighbor do the neighborly thing and knock on the door and ask you to politely to move it? Yeah, if you told them to get lost, then maybe they should call. But to me, that's where it just becomes tough because I, I, the entitlement argument very much resonates with me. But at the same time, that's again, I don't think there's a clean solution with 24 hours. And I don't think it's a clean solution with five. We put the, put the regulation out there and let the good people follow the expectations. And, you know, hopefully never really work out the small disagreements and the, and the bigger ones may be necessary for us to respond to.
All right. So we have a motion in a second to amend the proposed parking ordinance to make it so that there is still a five hour limit on parking in front of a residence, which is not your own. We will take a voice vote on this. So everybody in favor, please raise your hands. And that is, now it is six. So that is correct six. If you were a no, then please let me know. So correct six. So it is amended to five hours. Following that, are there any other amendments that wish to be offered by any council members? Seeing none, is there any, actually, I'm looking for a motion in a second to introduce by council seated and approved on first reading ordinance 2315.
And Mayor, that would be as amended, just for the record.
As amended. Councilmember Noble.
Yes, I'll make that motion. As amended.
Councilmember Mon Noble has made a motion to introduce by council seated and approved on first reading ordinance 2315 as amended. Is there a second? Councilmember Madera.
Second.
Have a motion in a second to introduce by council seated and approved on first reading ordinance 2315 as amended. Is there any discussion? Councilmember Hurst.
I was lowering my hand as you just called me. I apologize.
Seeing, Councilmember Noble. Okay, seeing a request for discussion, will the city clerk please read the title and take a roll call out?
Ordinance 2315, an ordinance amending the Commerce City Revised Municipal Code and further amending the model traffic code to regulate the parking of vehicles in residential areas and abandonment and towing of vehicles as amended. Councilmember Madera?
Yes.
Councilmember Alan Thomas, Councilmember Noble?
Yes.
Councilmember Wadiola?
Yes.
Councilmember Hurst?
Yes.
Councilmember Grimes, Councilmember Smith?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Frank, Mayor Hughesman?
Yes.
Passes six to zero.
Thank you. All right. Next on the agenda is administrative council business. In the script, it mentions taking a time check, but I think we can get through administrative council business under allotted meeting time. So we'll skip doing a vote on that at this time. Looks like I'm going to rearrange the order here. Selection of planning retreats facilitator, Mr. Tinklinburg, did you want to lead that discussion?
Well, really, I just need to know which facilitator, which firm city council wants to go with.
Councilmember Noble.
I had a question that has been out there that I haven't gotten a response to, which is which of these facilitators had done retreats via Zoom?
Is Mr. Burgeely with us yet?
Yes, sir. Councilwoman Noble, I believe the net sent out an email earlier today on that lists all of Ms. Ramos's experience with retreats specifically over Zoom. Mr. Kandif has mentioned that he has done several retreats over Zoom this year. I have not received the follow, any follow-up information from him that I requested about with whom those retreats were and what exactly they covered. But I believe the content that Ms. Ramos provided us was sent out an email earlier today.
Okay. So we heard from Ms. Ramos. I'm sorry, I didn't see a net's email and I apologize. So Ms. Ramos said, yes, I have done so, but Mr. Conduff did not reply?
Mr. Conduff did tell us that, he told me that he has done several of this year virtually. I just, he did not, when I followed up and asked for, for more specifics, I haven't received a response from him yet. So both, both have, we do have more detailed information on what Ms. Ramos has done in the virtual environment. I know that Mr. Conduff has done virtual retreats this year, but I couldn't give you more information beyond the fact that he has done some this year.
All right. So all those that wish to have Ms. Ramos be our facilitator, please raise your physical hands so we can get a count. Ms. Ramos will be our facilitator. Next up, that is the only item that we had from city staff or administrative council business. So are there any council members that have any administrative council business? Councilmember Noble.
Yes. Okay. So I have received several comments about speeding and also speed bumps. So in addition to Mr. Phillips, who talked about 66th and Monaco, and I know that Councilmember Alan Thomas would be very interested in that if, if she was here tonight and probably has pursued that herself. I also have a parkside drive between 112th and Landmark, Landmark, South Lawn, and then also Buffalo Mesa on 119th. So apparently, as people are going back to work or they're rushing around to do shopping or whatever the case might be, there's a lot of speeding that's going on. And there are people who want this addressed. Could you, could someone please address the issue of speed bumps? And whether the city supports the idea of speed bumps and what is required in order for a neighborhood to actually get speed bump?
I would like, I would like to call on Joe Wilson if he's on, no, he's not available.
Mr. Tinklinburg, Joe is actually in the meeting. I'm moving him over to a panelist now.
Okay, thank you. There's a set criteria that the city staff follows regarding speed bumps. And so I would ask Joe if he can give us a little more detail about that. You're on mute, Joe. Go ahead, Joe.
Mr. Tinklinburg, it looks like Joe may be experiencing some definite technical difficulties. I'm not sure if his mic just isn't working right now or not.
Okay. Well, basically there is a set of criteria that are followed. And then when the street meets the criteria, then the city staff follows up with the residents on that street to see, you know, to obtain their, their view on it. So that there's a step process that the city staff goes through to, to determine if a, a speed home can be put in.
So does a resident contact you directly? And may I just send you the addresses tomorrow?
Sure, that'd be fine.
Okay. Thank you very much. I'm curious though about the speeding because one of them, Mr. Phillips said earlier that when he's called multiple times about this to the police department, that he's been told that this is a low priority because of staffing. And I thought that we worry considerably about speeding on Tower and Highway 2. So I'm wondering about the side streets for residential areas where there might be children running around and someone trying to pull out of their driveway and they get hit by a speeding car?
Well, definitely the, uh, higher speed roadways with higher traffic are a higher priority, but, uh, Police Chief Nichols, uh, do you have anything to add to that?
I do. Thank you, sir. And then thank you, Councilwoman Noble for the question. Uh, we are absolutely concerned about speeding in all areas of the city, not just on our main thoroughfares. Uh, but one of the things that is scientifically proven is that the higher speed roadways cause much more devastating accidents. Typically, what we try to do when we receive speeding complaints is before we attribute an officer to that area, we do a speed assessment. And what that requires is us to put up some devices that will monitor speeds between seventy-two and up to a week. And then we make a determination if in fact what the residents are reporting is actually true. Almost eighty percent of the time, it is usually one person doing the speeding and quite frankly, residents are hoping that they get to watch when we catch that person, uh, which is very rarely the case. Um, I can tell you with some, uh, degree of certainty, the gentleman that spoke at the council meeting today regarding the speed studies on Monaco, that is an area in which we routinely work. Um, we have been embedded in that area for quite some time and yet those problems still persist. I think it is important to note that we are a no chase city, which means that if someone decides to run from the police, we do not endanger the community by chasing. That is, I don't want to suggest that it's problem number one, but it certainly contributes to the problem. Uh, most of the folks that travel to Commerce City realize that we are not going to pursue, not for traffic accident, not for traffic speeding anyway. And so they just tend not to stop. And so us being in the area is also a problem with our staffing levels. Uh, currently COVID nineteen has decimated us to the point that we're paying overtime to complete shifts. What that means is we are at minimum staffing to handle calls for service only. And when we receive these types of requests, uh, they are very difficult for us to get to in a timely manner. Uh, so there are a bunch of contributing factors that relate to this. It isn't just one factor. Uh, that area around Monaco Park, the process for putting up the speed bumps has been about a four month process. Part of that has been due to the COVID nineteen challenges and staffing. Uh, but that is a fairly lengthy process. And if I'm not mistaken, and I certainly don't want to speak for, uh, Director Wilson. I believe that area has been approved for a speed bump. So they're in the process of making that determination now. So it is possible. But it isn't anything that we just take one complaint and decide, let's put speed bumps up. Uh, we have to take a determination on snow routes and the impact on traffic and delivery trucks being able to come up and down your street. All of those things are impacted, uh, when we put up speed bumps. Again, I'm not the expert, uh, Director Wilson would be able to provide you with that information, but having just gone through that process, I'm fairly familiar with it. Hopefully that answers your question.
Yes, it does. Thank you very much. Uh, Mr. Sheasley sent us an email last week about, uh, minutes. And, um, I had observed that our study session minutes, which I thought were going to include when we gave direction, consensus direction, not a vote, but consensus direction, that those directions would be included in the study session minutes. However, the study session minutes state only the topic. So in every case on all of the oil and gas meetings that we had, for example, as special meetings or study sessions, that um, there is no direction in them. They simply say that the topic was oil and gas. And I believe in reading the material that Mr. Sheasley sent us, that a city council meeting, um, is an action report. And these extraordinary meetings such as we had for the oil and gas regulations are while similar to a city council meeting are also similar to a committee meeting. And that, um, we should have the direction in those minutes that was, um, stated by the council during that meeting. So I believe that that was what we asked for when we asked that there be minutes of the study session meetings. And, um, that however, has not been done.
I would just, uh, speak to what I sent. Um, I believe it's up to the council to determine how their minutes read typically. I, I think the direction, as I recall, and I don't know what the specific summaries you're getting of study sessions are. I've not reviewed those. It is intended, my understanding was that it was intended to reflect the consensus, um, of certain direction. I don't know that that was implemented at the time of the study sessions on oil and gas. But there's certain, I don't believe it was intended and I don't think it's appropriator or there's capacity to do a more in-depth summary other than what the consensus was. And I don't think that's what the intent was. So I, I'd be happy to work with the city manager's office and look to see what those look like. Um, and if there's a, is there a particular meeting recently that you have concerns with?
Yeah, it was all the oil and gas sessions because we don't have a way of knowing what staff heard versus what we heard. But the minutes so that we know we're all on the same page when these regulations come back to us in January or February or whenever they do. And that was a, a, a discussion at the time. And that was why we asked for it was at the time we asked for that.
Well, we'll take a look back.
Okay, thank you very much. Um, and this is my, oh, shoot, one other thing. Uh, River Oaks now has a water monitor in the ground. Does anyone on staff know why the water is being monitored? Um, is it the plume from the arsenal or something else?
I have no knowledge of it. Uh, it's in River Oaks, she said. We'll make an inquiry to find out what, what's going on.
Okay, thank you very much. Um, okay, this is the final one. I was, um, the National League of Cities reached out to me to ask if I would be a member of the Information Technology Committee. And, uh, I just wanted to let everyone know that and ask if there are any objections. I believe that that's our policy is to, um, inform our colleagues and, um, get your approval or otherwise.
No objection from me.
Here's there are no objections to that. Enjoy your tenure on that committee.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor.
Council member Hearst.
Yeah, I, I put my hand up, um, when Joe was, we're waiting for Joe. I think there's some other, um, challenges created when you're, when you're doing speed calming on certain roadways, whether it's a bus, whether it, you know, primary routes for, um, snow removal because it's a bus route. So one thing to quickly learn, and I'm not saying it snows every day and, you know, you should make major adjustments based off of, you know, eight or 10 days a year, but sitting behind a plow, um, and if it's not a familiar route that you're driving every day, the snow makes it, makes everything disappear. And so, um, you're putting your equipment and your driver and, you know, public property at greater risk when you start doing some traffic, um, easing or traffic calming on major arterials and arterial roadways. And so, um, some of the streets mentioned, you know, just tonight, that could be one of the challenges as to why it's not a, you know, the, the kind of level of need goes up before the traffic calming will go into place or be necessitated. Um, it's just because of the, trying to balance the operational necessity and the safety of putting those on there, um, for all situations, right? And so there, there is a challenging, um, decision-making process that goes along with, you know, putting traffic calming devices on any roadway in the state, you know, and, and it should be considerable and left to the traffic engineers and the standard by which govern, governs their license, you know?
Uh, yes, sir, uh, council member Hearst, uh, my apologies for not chiming in a little bit earlier, but your commentary, uh, is, is accurate. We have a set of policies and practices in place that help us make the determination as to what traffic calming methods would be the most, uh, appropriate for any given situation. Not only is it the type of road as well as the amount and number of, of violations and excess speed, uh, using the eighty-fifth percentile as the baseline. And then the, the amount of, of speeding, if you will, above that is whether it would qualify for education and training or signage or some more, uh, provocative or proactive measures such as speed bumps is that. So there's, there's a whole series of protocols that we need to go through that start, as Chief Nichols had mentioned, with doing an assessment and collecting the data for that area because there's a lot of times that most of us, when we're standing at the side of the road, think that people are traveling at a certain speed and our, our visuals are not necessarily the most accurate reflection of what's actually taking place on those roads and, and the frequency that it occurs. So there's a lot of, uh, dynamic, uh, uh, variables that, that need to be considered in that before we make a decision based on what a particular resident or person may notice on any particular time of day that occurs. So we have to take all those variables into consideration. And, uh, council member noble, as Chief Nichols had mentioned, that area in and around, uh, Monaco, uh, several of those areas, we've been asked to evaluate them on multiple occasions. And there's a new set of evaluations that are currently taking place. So anything that we do, uh, at any period of time, over time, uh, it, it's perishable data. So if we get a new request within six months of the old one, we go through and, and reevaluate that to see if the conditions have changed, which could very conceivably occur, especially when considering that development is, you know, an ongoing process for us. So, so it's not a static process and in conjunction with the police department, we go through that, uh, that process anytime we get a series of complaints from, uh, citizens such as the, uh, resident that complained earlier today. So we'll make sure that we circle back and communicate directly, uh, with that citizen as well as, uh, provide him the information that we've acquired. And if any new additional information in terms of a reassessment, uh, is, uh, warranted based on his comments, we'll make sure that we do that and get him as well as the residents, the information they need as soon as possible.
Council member Madera.
Yeah, just to piggyback on the speed bumps, uh, everyone thinks that they're great. It's usually one of the first ideas that comes up. Unless it's in front of your house, uh, we used to have a speed bump in front of our house and I can't tell you how many hit and runs happen, you know, for the vehicles that we had parked in front of our home. Now anytime that snow, you get someone hit it too fast and next thing you know, you wake up in the morning and, you know, the back of your, your truck is all dented up and there's no one around or no note. So, you know, it does provide some benefits, but there's also some downsides, especially for the people who have those, uh, speed bumps in front of their, their homes. So, you know, definitely, uh, be open to other means of traffic calming too, because, uh, it's not always the answer.
And council member, uh, Madera, to piggyback on the comments that you made, part of the process that we go through is when we make that evaluation, uh, part of that final determination for the, whether or not a speed bump is, uh, warranted. And if it's, it's going to be put at that location as coordination with the local residents to make sure that they don't have any uh, significant issues with the installation of it because of the reasons that part you just mentioned. So that is also part of the process. So that they, the members in the most immediate area that's impacted by that, we coordinate with those residents directly to make sure that we're not, uh, creating any, uh, undue, uh, disturbance to them or their properties or the vehicles that may be, uh, most directly impacted by that, by proximity, uh, to the speed bump.
Well, I appreciate that. I don't think that was always the case when, uh, they were putting in the speed bombs.
Now we're, we're refining our processes as we go. So hopefully we're becoming a little bit more sophisticated and civilized in our, in our process. Always room for improvement.
Council member noble.
Um, I wondered what we're doing regarding the two presentations. Do we discuss them? Do we vote on them? What happens now?
It's scheduled to come back to council for your decision. I have the date, just looking for it, January.
Under the procurement policy, I think, given the dollar amount, this one would come to council for final approval. So I think Jason's popped on. I think council take is gonna, whatever feedback was provided is gonna be directly or indirectly, staff's gonna take into consideration identifying a recommendation. I don't know your process for doing that, Mr. Rogers.
Thank you about that, Robert, uh, and also inner city manager, uh, Tinklerberg, uh, they are both correct. Uh, based off of, uh, the feedback and the questions that were posed to both, uh, respondents tonight, um, for consultation. Staff will go back internally to finalize a decision to be made in which, uh, we will then work through a contract with uh, one of the potential respondents and bring that forward to council for their, uh, for you all to take action in approving said contract. Uh, we have anticipated that we'd bring that contract back at, at the earnest in January so that we could be able to initiate the scope of work, uh, that has been outlined, uh, in our RFP and obviously in their responses, uh, go forward.
Since I was the only one who asked questions, how do you make that decision? I think that we need some sort of discussion about the, uh, presentations.
Great question, Pam. Uh, city staff has conducted a number of interviews in review of the, um, I'll say the proposals that have been put forward to us, uh, this step, uh, was a step in the overall process for staff, uh, staff's understanding of, I'll say, fit between both organ, um, both, both potential vendors. And for us to, once again, finalize our internal review to then make a selection and ultimately bring forward for, uh, your approval, uh, once again, or denial of said contract, uh, based on, of the qualitative and quantitative analysis that we've conducted over the last month and a half or so, uh, in the review of these firms.
Well, let me just express my grave concern about one presentation, including working with extraction oil and gas and also working with the Colorado Oil and Gas Association and no conflict of interest and changing the language of the contract. So I do have reservations, grave reservations about that group.
Thank you, ma'am. And we will obviously bring that back for our, our continued internal conversation to move the feedback outside of that today. So thank you.
Council member Wardiola.
I had a very similar question, uh, Director Rogers. I, I took notes of both presentations prior and then when they were presenting. And I was wondering, do we just email them to you or do you want me to discuss them now? Um, because I mean, if you guys are gauging, uh, on how our reaction was, is it our facial reactions? I just didn't, uh, I, you know, um, just because I think both of them had very good points and both had some challenges. Uh, so how do you guys want that, um?
So great question, sir. Um, if you have reactions, I would obviously recommend putting them on the public record that we have, given that we had public, uh, public presentations before you tonight. I would also say make sure that we do not misconstrue or, uh, misunderstand, uh, um, your feedback. Also email those to my attention. I will make sure that I and my team, uh, obviously, once again, continue to, to weave that feedback into our discussion and ultimate decision-making.
So, so for public record, I think, um, my biggest thing is our residents have been asking to be involved with processes through the city. That's one of the challenges we've had in Commerce City for many, many years. Uh, Group One really addressed that and that's what I liked. The experts are going to be there. They're going to hire the experts. That's what I really liked is they really focused on engagement and it focused on the pop, uh, the marginalized population that is always left behind. And, and many of that time is always in the core city. Um, so because of that engagement, um, I would prefer, uh, Group One. Um, just because they talked about it. Group Two have great experts. They know the city. They know the surrounding area, but But I think they will have a harder time bringing in our residents, especially the residents in the core city that come from those populations. So and and the other thing is group one really had it all drawn out for phase one, phase two, how much we're really getting into. Group two cannot answer a standard amount of dollars we're going to spend, and it's about equal if we do the high and the low. Look in the middle. So I just don't like picking someone and saying, oh, well, it might be ten thousand if we get sponsorships from Excel, but it might be fifty thousand. We don't know. Group one for their phase one, they had it. The scope of work was there. It was point on. Phase two, the only one that was arranged was phase three, and I think that's something that was a very pro. So for my feedback, the Lotus group, I believe, because of the community engagement, that really, you know, this has been an issue for our residents for many years, and that's the number one thing. You guys don't listen. You don't care. You don't listen. And here's a group that really brought the engagement and 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 then they're going to bring the expertise too. So that I would prefer group one.
Thank you, sir.
Okay. Councilman Wadio, I think you had great points on all those, and I wholeheartedly agree with everything that you said there. That's what I took out of the presentation as well. I didn't like the fact that there was this sliding scale that said it could cost this versus this versus the other one gave us a set price, and that's something we can budget off of. And I really did appreciate their civic engagement and feel that that is critically important to this position and one of the reasons why this position has been advocated for. I have a couple items for administrative council business I'd like to bring up. First off, great conversation on speed bumps and on traffic calming measures and everything. Seems like there's a great process out there, but seems like very few people know what the process is. So my first motion is that staff prepare a presentation and give it to us during a study session so the residents can be informed over what goes into the traffic calming process. What is criteria necessary for traffic calming measures to be installed, how the process and the study is conducted and everything else, so that residents and the council alike can be informed of what that process is. That is my first motion. Councilmember Madera.
Second.
Thank you. I have a motion in a second for staff to prepare a presentation outlining the details behind the traffic calming process and everything else that goes with it for a study session in the near future. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, we'll do a voice vote, which is the equivalent of raising your hand. Please raise your hand in the physical screen so I can count the votes. One, two, three. It is unanimous, six to zero. Thank you, staff.
Presentation. Mary Heisman, Mary Heisman, real quick. Can we can we like record that and like make a video that we could share on our social media after the fact? Maybe we add that part of the motion. I just think not everybody watches it.
All of our study sessions and meetings right now, if you didn't know, are being broadcast live on YouTube, and so it'll be out there for prosperity and for generations to come.
All right. I just thought it'd be good to clip it and send it on social media.
Yeah. Second, had an email from the director, executive director of Kids First. They are applying for a SEPA through the Suncor settlement process. They have asked for a letter of support from our city council. So my motion is to ask staff to draft a letter of support from the city council and authorize my signature to be affixed to said letter so that they can apply for their SEPA grant. Councilman Wadiola.
I'll second that motion.
Thank you. I have a motion in a second to staff to draft a letter of support for Kids First for the SEPA application. They've provided some details and talking points that they want. I know that Mr. Tinklinburg also got that email. And allow me to affix my signature to it. Is there any discussion regarding this? Councilmember Hurst.
No, wait, support, sorry.
Great. I'm seeing the request for discussion. We'll do a voice vote again. Please raise your hands. One, two, three. Looks like that is going to, there's six. That is going to be a six to zero as well. Thank you. That is all the administrative council business that I have for this evening. We'll move on to reports. Mr. Tinklinburg.
Thank you, Mayor. I wanted to thank city council for allowing me to take four days off last week to kind of air out the brain and and refresh. And I appreciate that very much. Wanted to give a little bit clarification on a response regarding Suncor earlier in the meeting. The Magellan Pipeline is a reference to the company that owns the pipeline, operates the pipeline. They're not affiliated with Suncor, but Suncor was assisting through mutual aid agreement with them. So it's not a Suncor leak, if you will. It was Magellan is the company that that operates that pipeline. So just wanted to clarify that. And then you've taken care of the facilitators. So that's everything for me. Thank you.
Thanks, sir. Are there any other council members that wish to make a report? Councilmember Madera.
Last Friday, we had the CML Policy Committee meeting. So we set the CML's position on upcoming legislative session. So you should see that coming up, especially during our legislative subcommittee meetings.
Thank you. Any other council members with a report to make? Seeing none, I have a brief one. I participated in the Metro Mayor Caucus meeting we had last Thursday morning. Governor Polis was on the meeting with us, answering questions from mayors regarding enforcement and the public health orders and the current dials and framework and everything that is going on. So if you did see this evening, Tri-County Health did extend the public health order for Adams County for another thirty days. So all those rules are still in effect because of that extension. That is all that I have for a report. Any last alibis? Any council members wishing to make a report? Seeing none, would like to thank everybody for watching. Also want to wish a somber Pearl Harbor remembrance day to everybody out there, especially to any World War II survivor that may be out there. Definitely a tragic day and just want to say thank you for your service and want to thank everybody for participating this evening. Have a good night. Have a good week. See you next week for a study session.